Good morning. I'd like to call this public hearing of the Committee on Health to order. Today is Wednesday, December 10, 2025. The time is 9:31 a.m. I'm at-large Councilmember Christina Henderson, Chair of the Committee on Health. We are in room 500 of the John A. Wilson Building, but this is also a hybrid meeting with public witnesses also testifying virtually as well as in person, and then the government witnesses will be testifying in person. Today, this hearing is to consider Today, this hearing is to consider three bills before the committee. Bill 26-226, the Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act of 2025, was introduced by Councilmember Breanna Nadeau and co-introduced by me and councilmembers Pinto, Allen, Lewis George, Parker, and White. It would make the permanent, the district's targeted outreach program for individuals using substances in high need areas. Since 2021, this work has been operated as a pilot funded through the Substance Abuse Behavioral Health Services Targeted Outreach Grant. The bill would formally, excuse me, would formally establish the program within the Department of Behavioral Health as well as authorize the designation of high needs areas, fund nonprofits to deliver consistent outreach, and require regular reporting on engagement, service connections, overdose interventions, and harm reduction activities. This approach aims to address visible substance use and related safety concerns in public spaces while strengthening the continuum of care leading to the district's residents or hopefully leading into districts leading into the district's crisis stabilization centers. By creating a permanent and structured outreach program, the legislation would support more consistent engagement, improve coordination with community partners, and sustain pathways to treatment and recovery for residents most affected by substance use. Bill 26-91, the Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Transparency Amendment Act, was introduced by myself as along, along with councilmembers Pinto, Fruman, Parker, Allen, Lewis George, and Robert White. It requires the Department of Behavioral Health to develop and publish a standardized checklist and develop and secure online portal for tracking behavioral health housing voucher program applications. This bill seeks to respond to critical gaps in the voucher process at DBH. Clients and caseworkers currently experience challenges navigating necessary steps for processing vouchers and accessing real-time status information. This lack of visibility often leads to misunderstandings, document loss, and delays in securing stable housing. This bill will ensure that each step in the process is clearly tracked, contributing to more efficient service delivery and more housing stability for behavioral health clients. And finally, Bill 26-462, the 988 Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment Act of 2025, which I introduced along with councilmembers Fruman, Nadeau, Lewis George, Pinto, Parker, and Robert White, would create a dedicated 988 Lifeline and Crisis Services Fund to support the district's behavioral health crisis response system. Since the launch of the National 988 Line, call volume has been up, yet our local response has depended on limited and inconsistent funding. This bill would provide a stable, transparent source of support so that district can meet the national standards for timely and quality crisis services and support. The bill would authorize a modest telecommunications fee that is common in other jurisdictions, and the revenue would only be used for 988 operations and related crisis services, including call center staffing, mobile crisis teams, crisis stabilization centers, outreach technology improvements that strengthen the coordination with 911. It would also require annual reporting and independent audits to ensure that the fund is used appropriately and in line with federal guidance. The purpose of this legislation is to build a reliable and sustainable crisis response system that connects residents to care when they are experiencing a mental health crisis or substance use crisis. By establishing the fund, we can improve response times and expand clinical support and strengthen the continuum of crisis services. I now like to welcome my colleagues in attendance to make any opening statements. Councilmember Nadeau?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for holding a hearing on my bill, the Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act of 2025. This bill establishes a targeted outreach program within the Department of Behavioral Health that supports outreach workers developing relationships with individuals in need of substance use disorder treatment and behavioral health services in areas of high need and connecting them with treatment and other resources. This measure would turn a successful pilot program operating in wards 1, 5, 6, 7, and 8 into a permanent bill. Despite subsisting on one-time funding from the council each year, this program has shown considerable early success. For example, a 51% decrease in non-fatal overdoses in the 500 block of T Street in less than a year. What DBH has found, not surprisingly, is that sustained outreach and the development of trusted relationships with individuals leads to greater success in moving people from substance use to treatment to more successful lives and to better community outcomes in the neighborhoods that are targeted for outreach. Establishing a permanent program ensures this important and successful work can continue without service interruptions. The success of this pilot highlights the impact of place-based strategies that provide consistent and intensive outreach and support to individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to proceed to our public witness testimony. Witnesses will have three minutes to testify. Obviously, you're welcome to submit longer written testimony for the record. We'll have a timer that's here and as well as online, and we'll go from there. Okay. Chris Gamble from Children's Law Center. McKenna Osborne, also from Children's Law Center. Okay. Jamila White. Jaclyn Verner. And Johnny, would you like to go with Sydney? Do you guys want to go together? Oh, okay. You're all of the same. Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll wait, and we'll call you on the next one, and I'll call Kristen now. Okay, Chris, when you're ready.
Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and members of the Committee on Health. My name is Chris Gamble, and I'm a behavioral health policy analyst at Children's Law Center. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of the 988 Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment Act of 2025. This legislation is urgently needed, and we're excited the committee has moved quickly to introduce it. People experiencing a behavioral health crisis require a behavioral health response. When non-behavioral health professionals respond, not only are our person's needs not met, but they are put at risk of facing unnecessary consequences. Currently, D.C. residents are still more likely to call 911 for help with crises, creating an overreliance on law enforcement to respond to these situations, ultimately leading to unnecessary contact with the criminal legal system, overwhelming emergency rooms unequipped for crisis stabilization, and traumatizing those in need of behavioral health services. The district has some of the components of a behavioral health crisis response system, but they are not operating at full capacity. We have an understaffed 988 call center, understaffed mobile crisis teams, and a crisis stabilization unit only for adults. To solve for the existing gaps in the system and the lack of cohesive functioning amongst its parts, reliable investment is required that is beyond the district's current capacities provide. Establishing a 988 fee is a way to ensure predictable funding as the district works to develop a cohesive crisis response system. The $12.5 million that the district's fee will generate annually can be used in many reasonable ways to supplement costs and move the functioning of our crisis response system forward. My written testimony contains more details on the various areas of investment that the fee can provide supplemental funding for, but I will highlight a couple today. The 988 fee can help expand the staffing and technology required for the data transparency our crisis response system desperately needs. Instead of waiting for agency performance oversight hearings to learn how the system is functioning, there should be consistent updates on the system's operations. akin to the 911 dashboard developed by OUC, there needs to be a 988 dashboard that regularly displays information like call volume, call type, and disposition. The dashboard could also integrate mobile crisis team data like response times, crisis type, and response location. Publicly available data is not just informative. It allows for precise improvements to be made through independent data analysis. Alongside the 988 fee, there remains a need for regulatory definition and enforcement of crisis response system operations. The steady shrinking of youth mobile crisis services is a prime example of why guardrails are needed, with CHAMPs seeing its funding and operations reduced due to assumptions that schools can manage student crises alone. DBH is now also planning to form an in-house youth mobile crisis team with no indication of what that means for CHAMPs. By better defining and enforcing required components of D.C.'s crisis response system, there can be reassurance that the 988 fee will contribute to developing the system in a responsible way. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I welcome any questions you have.
Thank you. McKenna?
Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and Councilmember Nadeau. My name is McKenna Osborne. I'm a senior policy attorney at Children's Law Center and a resident of the district. I'm testifying today on behalf of Children's Law Center in support of the Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Transparency Amendment Act. Each year, Children's Law Center works with hundreds of families who are trying to provide their children with a stable place to call home. We see firsthand the profound impact housing insecurity has on a child's health, development, and ability to learn, and the valuable role that long-term housing vouchers play in preventing such insecurity. Through our experience working with families who receive local vouchers administered by the Department of Human Services, we also regularly observe how a lack of transparency and inadequate communication can cause significant administrative delays that force eligible district families to remain in insecure and unsafe housing for lengthy periods of time and undermine the efficacy of our local voucher programs. Therefore, Children's Law Center supports the passage of this act to improve efficiency, reduce delays, and prevent document loss in DBH's voucher administration process. In my testimony today, I'd like to offer insights on how DHS and the District of Columbia Housing Authority, with oversight from the Committees on Housing and Human Services, have been working to make administration of other local vouchers more transparent and user-friendly. I hope this will help the committee identify areas where DBH can draw from or align with existing initiatives at DHS and DCHA. First, on the requirement that DBH develop and publish a standardized checklist for its housing vouchers. In 2024, DHS and DCHA launched a new streamlined application for their voucher programs. The application packet includes a checklist of the steps that need to be completed and a comprehensive list of materials that satisfy documentation requirements. We encourage the committee and DBH to review these materials, which are published on DCHA's website, to help guide its development of the standardized checklist required by this act. Second, on the requirement for DBH to establish and maintain a secure online portal for applicants, caseworkers, and property managers to track a housing voucher application. We encourage the committee and DBH to determine whether DBH could utilize the same portal as other local voucher programs to avoid unnecessary duplication. For example, DCHA and DHS are currently working to see if the Rent Cafe portal used for DCHA's federal vouchers can be expanded to other local vouchers administered by DHS. Lastly, on the requirement to establish a system for tracking voucher administration metrics, DHS operates a public-facing dashboard tracking utilization of its locally funded vouchers. It's a useful resource for identifying the biggest points of delay within the process and targeting recommendations for improvement accordingly. We encourage the committee and DBH to review this website as an example. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Jaclyn?
Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on the proposed Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Transparency Act of 2025. My name is Jaclyn Verner, and I am an attorney at Disability Rights DC at University Legal Services, the designated protection and advocacy program for people with disabilities in DC. Dear DC, thanks to council for your work, and we are in support of this bill. Dear DC, as observed, that DBH's process for connecting consumers to its available housing vouchers has become decreasingly transparent in recent years. DBH previously used an application that was referred to as the Housing Eligibility Assessment List Application or the HEAL application. Historically, DBH maintained a list of all HEAL applications that were submitted on behalf of consumers by their CSAs, and it was DRDC's understanding that DBH used this list in determining which consumers should be prioritized for a voucher when one became available. Unfortunately, DBH decided to seize the above practice. Specifically, in March of 2024, DBH stated to DRDC that HEAL applications are no longer valid as DBH does not maintain a waiting list. Later, in August of 2025, DBH discussed with DRDC that although vouchers are limited, DBH does continue to issue vouchers to people in certain priority groups. However, DBH now solely relies on CSA staff to just flag specific consumer cases for DBH when a voucher becomes available. This new process takes away really any structure, transparency, and fairness from DBH's decision to whom to issue a voucher. In fiscal year '23's performance oversight responses, DBH indicated that 10,118 consumers who were actively enrolled with DBH self-reported as wanting support, getting better housing, primarily with a housing voucher. DRDC can only imagine how many responses from CSA staff DBH's housing division receives when it notifies CSAs of a voucher opening. There's no practical way for DBH to fairly wade through all of those responses from CSA staff in order to determine who should be matched with that voucher. Moreover, consumers are entirely beholden to whether they're currently connected to a caseworker who's actively involved in their care and who timely responds to DBH's emails. There are surely many consumers who are in need of stable housing who don't even have a chance of getting matched to one of DBH's vouchers because their caseworker is either absent or overburdened or just doesn't favor them. A further concern is that DBH does not appear to use all of the vouchers that it has available each year, and our written testimony further elaborates on this. And so, we encourage the council to work with DBH to restore a voucher application process and a voucher waitlist and a standardized and publicly available process for selecting their voucher recipients. We propose that this new voucher application process and waitlist could be maintained in the online portal that's proposed in this bill. DRDC also has experience with advocating for clients to both move through the lease-up process once they've been matched with one of DBH's vouchers, and also with advocating for clients to relocate using their DBH voucher. In our experience, CSA staff have not seemed to be well-trained in what steps they must take throughout this lease-up process, and everything is completed by all relevant parties just emailing documentation back and forth. And so, based on these experiences, we agree that the creation of an online portal that can be accessed by consumers, CSA staff, and DBH would be beneficial throughout the pre-lease and lease-up process as well. Our testimony provides much more detail, and I thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Kristen?
Good morning, Chairperson Henderson, Councilmember Nadeau, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of the 988 Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment Act. My name is Kristen Ewing, and I am Policy Counsel at the D.C. Appleseed Center for Law and Justice. I'm here today to provide support for this legislation, which would strengthen the district's entire crisis response system. This is an important step to ensure residents in crisis get the care they need quickly, safely, and compassionately. This legislation is vital for four reasons. First, 988 is a critical public health tool. It gives residents a safe, accessible alternative to 911, connecting people in crisis to trained professionals who can de-escalate situations, provide support, and link them to care. Every day, 988 prevents harm, reduces unnecessary police involvement, and ensures people are met with care rather than criminalization. But 988 can only work if it's supported by mobile crisis teams, stabilization centers, treatment options, and follow-up care. Without these, the lifeline cannot fully deliver on its promise. Second, federal disinvestment makes local funding urgent. Federal support for 988 and other behavioral health services is shrinking, leaving localities responsible for sustaining these critical services. Without a stable locally-generated revenue stream, D.C. risks understaffed call centers, gaps in mobile crisis response, and limited capacity to meet growing community needs. Third, investing in crisis systems also helps divert behavioral health calls from police. Professionals trained in mental health and substance use crisis can de-escalate situations, connect people to care, and reduce unnecessary arrest or use of force. Strong behavioral health crisis systems not only improve outcomes for residents, they also allow police to focus on situations that require law enforcement. This aligns with recommendations from the March 2025 Roundtable on He-Man and Trauma-Informed Crisis Response. Last, D.C.'s crisis system is underdeveloped and underfunded. The community response teams and CHAMPs have faced repeated budget cuts over the last several years. These reductions have shrunk staffing, limited hours, and reduced overall coverage, leaving residents, especially youth, without timely, trauma-informed support. These gaps directly undermine 988 and the broader crisis system. Beyond supporting 988 infrastructure, this legislation can address these challenges by broadening public education about 988, providing funding to adequately staff mobile crisis teams for adults and youth, expanding stabilization centers, including a much-needed youth center, providing alternatives to hospitalization, police involvement, and use of ERs, creating clear options for follow-up care, and requiring transparent reporting on outcomes, response times, and call volume. Paired with legislation or regulations that define the crisis system, set performance standards, and require public reporting such as a dashboard, these funds can ensure D.C. residents consistently receive high-quality, trauma-informed care. In conclusion, 988 is a lifeline for residents in crisis, but it can't succeed without sustainable funding and a robust system to support it. D.C. Appleseed strongly supports this bill and urges the council to adopt it in a way that strengthens the full crisis response continuum, giving residents the compassionate, effective care they deserve. We'll be submitting our written testimony shortly, and I welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses. Gus spoke about, I think, all three bills in some way. Gus spoke about, I think, all three bills in some way, shape, or form, so we certainly appreciate that. Mr. Gamble, I first wanted to say thank you. You made this suggestion earlier this year during the budget process, that we look at creating a 988 fee to be able to sustain both that program as well as augment some of the support for our crisis support. You know, I'm always about solution-oriented. You came with a problem and had a solution, and unfortunately, we didn't have enough time in the budget process to get that done, but we heard you. And Marcia has been on a journey with the folks at 988 and 911 in terms of understanding the technical nature of this, and how do we improve it, how do we sustain it, and how do we make it work? So, thank you for that earlier this year, and as a sign for everybody else, we do listen. We do listen to the testimony. We may not be able to act on it that day, but we do certainly listen and act on that as well. Okay, McKenna, I wanted to ask a question, and frankly, I think this could be a question for Jaclyn as well. This is about the housing voucher bill. So, McKenna, in your testimony, you talked about how DCHA and DHS recently streamlined their application process, excuse me, creating the checklist, and then also providing upfront, here are the list of documents that would be acceptable, et cetera. Now, I don't understand how DBH got left out of that process, because it kind of seems to me that, like, everybody should have the same things, but it does beg the question of why do we have so many agencies who have their own vouchers as opposed to it being more centralized? I wanted to give you an opportunity to comment on that.
Well, I also am not sure why DBH was not included in that process, but I do think it was led by the lab at DC for DHS and DCHA, and they really did take for the local vouchers administered by DHS and the federal vouchers administered by DCHA, and they played various roles together in local voucher administration. They took some disparate parts and put them really into one core application packet with a supplement for DHS vouchers and then federal housing choice vouchers. So, there also could potentially be a supplement for DBH vouchers.
Well, let me ask this.
See if they could use the DHS ones.
Let me ask this, and Jaclyn, feel free to jump in, because I'm sure you guys have clients who are part of that process. Is the DBH application asking anything dramatically different than what is already being asked by DHS?
So, I am not generally working on the side of the DHS applications in terms of those vouchers, so... But I can say that the first step in getting connected to one of DBH's vouchers used to be that HEAL application, which was literally a one-page form that collects very basic information, and then once they would decide that this person would be the one that would get that voucher, then there's like a pre-voucher application form that you have to fill out. I'm guessing it's very similar information. You just require income verification documentation.
Yeah.
You know, that basic, those basic things, and I do know that they still use the DC Housing Authority's infrastructure in administering their vouchers, and so it would seem that they should all be using the same documentation.
Okay. I mean, we have gone through this process in a couple of different agencies around, like, let's streamline. If we're all asking the same information, can we all, can we put our questions in one document, not such that the document is 10 pages long, but, you know, is there a way for us to sort of minimize on that front? And so, we'll kind of be looking at that. Ashley has reached out to DCHA to talk about whether or not there are ways for us to streamline the existing voucher...
What do we call it? Database portal?
Portal. Because what I anticipate is that if we try to set up a separate portal just for DBH, somebody's going to come back and tell me it's going to cost five FTEs and $3 million. So, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We just want to add a little something extra for folks. I don't have any further questions. I'll turn to Councilmember Nado, see if she has any questions for this panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys. If you haven't uploaded your testimony for the record, please make sure you do so. Great. Okay, Johnny Bailey, Sidney Clay, Amber Lashbog. I don't see Saleem. All right. Jake Listock. Oh, Jake's here. Great. Okay, Johnny, when you're ready. You just got to hit the button.
Good morning, Councilmember Henderson and the council. My name's Johnny. I've been managing the place-based initiatives, both on Seventh and T area as well as in more recently Waterfront since the inception and beginning, and easily has been one of the most amazing, beautiful things that I have been, had the privilege to be a part of as a social worker, as a lifelong community member, and as a recovered addict. We have been able to build relationships and trust within the community in a way that I never would have imagined being able to do. We have been able to use that to make referrals to treatment programs, get folks into different treatment groups. We now have five different recovery groups, as well as a grief group and other groups. We established a safe passage program for the kids over both at Cleveland Elementary as well as by the daycare, pretty much eliminating, without police or anything else, sex work and drug use during school hours. We've been able to quickly address and clean up any biohazards or issues that are happening whenever asked from any community member. We've hosted events, bringing community together. Most recently, Thanksgiving Day, we had 200 meals served of local members working more than a dozen other organizations. We also recently, the week before, had 70 people show up to get winter clothing, and we're doing a blanket drive alongside Lighthouse coming up next week. We've run compensated community cleanups, which has allowed us to give gift cards that were donated to community members to help them have a stake in cleaning up and keeping their area nice. Worked with de-escalation programs and been able to do Narcan trainings for local businesses, and have truly been able to come together and bring all aspects together in a way that you can't without having that team and that focus in one area. I work closely with the homeowners, as well as the businesses, other nonprofits, the folks on the streets, the drug users, everybody. And we found a whole lot of common ground and areas to support each other. And for it, we have seen drastic reduction in fatal ODs. We have seen the neighborhood become cleaner. As I mentioned earlier, we've been able to remove any drug use, sex worker issues from these school areas during school hours. We have people out there both drop off and pick up for the children. We've also been able to use this to train and bring community members in as peers and as volunteers and interns, and to work in different ways to educate. I thank you very much for this opportunity to be a part of this project, to make this change, and to speak to you all today.
Thank you. Sidney?
You got to turn your mic on, Sidney.
There you go.
All right.
I'll figure this out eventually. Hi, thank you. My name is Cindy Clay, and for the past 30 years, I've had the privilege of leading HIPS, which is honoring individual power and strength, and we are DC's largest and oldest harm reduction organization that's providing services to the city, both for people who do sex work, people who use drugs, and for the unhoused LGBTQ community. I'm very happy to be here to testify in support of the Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act of 2025, and super excited to talk about the success that our program has had in the two areas that we have been able to work in. The Seventh and T hotspot area, which started in 2024, and now the Southwest location that has expanded this year. What we've been able to do with the added capacity that this funding has been able to give us has significantly improved the health, wellness, and quality of life for the residents and community members in those areas. More than that is that I want to tell the council that the funds invested in the work has allowed our organization to do what we have always really wanted to do, is to serve in the capacity of helping neighborhoods address what are very real issues that come on when we address gentrification, when there is sex work and drug use happening in those areas. There are real concerns that community members come to us with, and the challenge that our organization has had, even though that we have always been there through dedicated overnight outreach and reaching out to the community, is really the time to work with the community, all community members, to solve those problems. And I do think that the success of these hotspot programs, including, you know, reducing fatal overdoses by over 50% in just six months, really do show that when community nonprofit organizations, old, you know, old-school community members and new community members can all get together and really invest some resources into providing the time for people to both talk, understand what the issues are, and then provide solutions, we see the success that both of these hotspot programs have had, but also that can happen from effective and impactful investment into addressing our communities' challenges. I know that Johnny talked a little bit about the overall existing success of the programs, but I wanted to provide at least a little bit of numbers. Both of our programs are providing, you know, over 3,000 to 5,000 points of service throughout the year, which roughly means about 500 to 600 services per month in the area. We have at least 200-plus, like, actual folks who are getting into treatment or other supports for substance abuse counseling. We have two new groups that are providing daily low-threshold drug treatment support for folks, and the staff itself, most of whom come from the communities that the hotspots are located, have reversed personally over 15 overdoses, specifically in the Southwest location, and distributed over 604 doses of naloxone. So, enclosure, thank you also very much for both implementing these programs and giving us an opportunity to make a difference in our neighborhoods, and also for the opportunity to continue what I believe is really, really highly successful and highly impactful community work.
Thank you. Amber?
Chairperson Henderson and members of the committee, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Amber. I'm a resident of Southwest DC. I'm speaking today as a community member and as someone in recovery who has personally experienced the impact of steady compassionate outreach. I started going to the weekly SMART meetings, led by HIPS, at the Southwest Library early this year. In the beginning, it was small, sometimes just Johnny and me, but within a few months, the room was so full, we were pulling out extra chairs. People of every age, ethnicity, and circumstance started showing up. They came for many different reasons, from eating disorders to hard substances, and people who probably wouldn't have crossed paths were showing up to support one another. The Sudden Grief Group that meets right before SMART, led by Phoenix, gives people a place to be vulnerable and feel understood in a way that only those who have faced overdose, suicide, or violent loss can truly appreciate. I've seen that same community building throughout Southwest. This past Easter, I volunteered with HIPS at Greenleaf Park, where they and other neighborhood groups gathered families. Kids played with the Easter Bunny, but parents were talking with outreach workers about what they see in their communities, and people were running up to hug Cynthia at the HIPS table. HIPS even had a mobile van offering free STD testing, and it felt like the neighborhood was taking care of itself. I was proud to be there. I see HIPS at our farmer's markets, handing out Narcan and teaching people how to use it confidently. Even people who don't personally know anyone at risk want to be prepared to help a neighbor. People come back saying they use their kit to support a friend, or they keep one at home because they have teenagers and they understand that one pill can kill. They distribute snacks and water to unhoused neighbors, distribute wound care kits, and connect people to testing, housing, and treatment. And these may look like small gestures, but they prevent crises before EMS or police are involved. And I want to acknowledge the reality in Southwest that we do have a strong police presence. We do see it, but enforcement alone can't solve the violence, the overdoses, or the substance use. Outreach workers don't replace law enforcement. They fill the space that enforcement cannot reach. They build trust, de-escalate situations, and provide trauma-informed support long before more serious measures become necessary. These organizations act as almost like a community-based diversion program in that way. Community safety and community health are inextricably linked, symbiotic and complementary. This bill recognizes how essential, consistent, place-based outreach is for connecting people to care. I've seen that impact myself. Every week, I'm asking you to give this work sable funding it needs so that HIPS can keep strengthening the community I call home. Thank you for your time and for supporting programs that make Southwest safer, healthier, and more connected.
Thank you. Jake?
Good morning, Chair Henderson, members of the committee. My name is Jake Listock, and I'm here today on behalf of CTIA, the trade association for the wireless communications industry. I'm here today to address some concerns we have with Bill 462 related to the 988 tax amount. I want to start by emphasizing that CTIA in our industry understands the importance of the 988 program, and we support the designation of 988 as the three-digit dial number, and have implemented network changes in order to allow Americans to dial 988 when they're in crisis. We also recognize the need for a viable 988 funding structure. We believe that this should incorporate federal funds, state general appropriations, as well as the option to implement 988 taxes. So, from the outset, it's important to note that most states have chosen not to implement new 988 taxes on their residents to support these programs. Instead, they've looked to general fund appropriations, utilizing federal funds or studying the issue further. Eleven states have enacted a new tax on their residents, but if DC were to enact this, you guys would have the highest 988 tax in the country. Wireless customers in DC already pay taxes, fees, and surcharges that are significantly higher than nearly all the goods in DC. In addition to the 911 fee of 76 cents, wireless users are currently paying a 10% excise tax on their services, which is nearly double the 6% sales tax. To put this in perspective, a family with four wireless phones spending $100 a month on service are, or paying $13 a month specifically, or over $150 a year just on DC state taxes. That is in addition to $150 on the USF surcharge, and if this tax were to go in place, it would be $36.50 additional, which doesn't sound like much, but when these cumulative regressive taxes start to add up, they affect vulnerable populations currently dealing with higher costs of living. Furthermore, the legislation does not appear to be based off of a cost-based study. Instead, it looks like it's using the 911 fee structure. 988 call centers have very different operational scopes, and it would be unlikely that they require the same resources. Again, the tax rate of 76 cents would be the highest in the nation. To put this in comparison, Maryland recently enacted theirs at 25 cents, Virginia's at 12 cents. So, we'd recommend respectfully that a cost analysis be prepared to outline the needs of this and how the tax would be used before the tax would be implemented. If you choose to enact the tax, CTIA would recommend that the scope would be limited to funding the equipment, the communication services, and the direct costs for the crisis hotline centers. We have generally supported 988 fees necessary to cover these capital costs for setting up the call centers, the technology, and the staffing for them, but we do not believe the additional outreach and the other wraparound services should be funded from taxes on wireless bills. Similar to how 911 is funded, we fund the call routing and call-taking of 911. We don't fund police, fire, and EMS services that respond to the calls. So, while we remain a strong partner in the provision of these services, we are concerned with the high tax amount on our consumers, and we would support providing appropriate responses to people experiencing mental health crises, but we do not believe the entire cost of these services should be borne on wireless consumers. So, therefore, we respect that if you choose to impose a new 988 tax, that there'd be a cost analysis to identify the level of funding needed before you implement it, and we look forward to working with you on this further, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses. I think, Amber, you said something in your testimony around enforcement alone cannot solve the problem, and I think that was one of the impetus for us choosing to do the pilot work around outreach, because we recognize we had hotspots, we recognize we had particular problems, and frankly, even if we talked to our, you know, colleagues over at MPD, they would say, this is way too much for us to sort of handle on a day-to-day basis, right? You don't want officers to be the ones who are essentially doing this type of substance use outreach, because frankly, their goal is public safety, not necessarily helping someone transition into recovery. And it's interesting that we're having this conversation now, so earlier this week, well, I guess it's Wednesday, so yeah, this week. The Office of the Chief Medical Examiner released the opioid fatality reports for 2022 and 2023. Yes, I know they're behind, but... Yes, I know they're behind. But it is a meaningful outlook and snapshot to remind people that even though we're not talking about opioids on the national news every night, it is definitely something that's still impacting district residents. So, in 2023, for instance, there was an 8.4% increase in opioid-related mortality, which averaged about 43 deaths per month. Forty-three deaths per month in DC related to opioids. 97% was fentanyl-related. 68% of all opioid-related deaths occurred among adults between the ages of 40 to 69. Just think about that. 73% of the cases were observed in males. 84% of the cases were observed in African-Americans. And 62% of district residents who died from opioid-related injury in 2023 lived in wards 5, 7, and 8. And so, that doesn't necessarily draw in the particular areas that you all talked about. HIPS in terms of Southwest in Ward 6, and 7th and T in Ward 1. But we knew that those were hotspot areas as well that we wanted to add some concentration on. One of the things I wanted to ask from the team from HIPS is, we have some other areas around the city. So, we fund these outreach pilots in Ward 1, Ward 5, Ward 6, Ward 7, and Ward 8. Some are more successful than others. I think 7th and T has been our perhaps shining star example. What would you say that we need to be looking at in terms of how do we improve for the other locations? I guess the oversight to the grantees, really, because we're not the ones who is doing the day-to-day work.
I think one of the most important things that made 7th and T successful is the community working together from all angles. We started everything with a town hall that brought all the community members together. Once a month, we have an open forum for community members to come and tell us what they like, what they don't like. We work closely with the businesses and nonprofits, we've been given space in a building even. And it's all because we've been able to actually work, not with, I don't see myself as simply answering to the clients, organization, or anything. I answer to the community as a whole, and I ensure that the community as a whole has a voice in everything. You can't please everybody, obviously. But I think the key of 7th and T is just unprecedented cooperation. And I think part of that was really caring and reaching out, not just to the people we had to, but everyone.
I think you're right in terms of that, right? Doing the canvassing pre-work to let folks know, "Hey, we're here, and this is the number to call. This is where we'll be." Because we do have some other areas where if I go ask the community, they're like, "Nobody's here." And I was like, "No, but we're paying somebody."
Everybody has my number, including MPD, which calls me for nonviolent things. And we have the shop phone and everything, and that's really made a difference to work with everyone.
Yeah, thank you. I think from a programmatic standpoint, 7th and T was the program that we had the longest kind of like running capacity to start the relationships and to get everybody involved. Like, I mean, that's really what makes, it's the reason that HIPS is most successful with the folks that we work with is because we have spent three decades really kind of building the credibility and the trust that when we say we want something to happen, like, we really mean it and we're going to follow through on it. And I think that, you know, when you're opening up in new areas, when you have new community folks, like, making sure that the folks, like, doing the work are from or as close to the community as possible, making sure that you're engaging all the community stakeholders, like, that is, that we have had our own challenges in trying to kind of like move in and make sure that Southwest and other locations that we're moving into and providing new services happen. That takes time to be successful because it's not just easy, you know. But I think that for us, that's when I've seen that we've been most successful. And I think that's why 7th and T, you know, has been really successful. Johnny has personal ties to that area, was working in that area for a really long time. It takes time, and you need to work with the folks, as many stakeholders as possible.
Yeah. I will say, there was a time we would get a call literally once or twice a week about something going down, sort of in that 7th and T area, and we haven't really had that. You know, from the neighbors, the school, and the businesses that are kind of in that area. And so, we're trying our best to try to replicate that in some other places. And we know that there are other hotspots. And I think one of the things we're kind of thinking about in terms of making this permanent is to provide the nimbleness of organizations to be able to shift and move as the population also shifts and moves as well. So, for instance, like, I know an area that we really need to focus on is the Starburst at Benning and H. And I'm trying to convince my colleagues who represent those areas, like, "No, this is really where your target should be." Nonetheless, we're going to keep sort of working on that. But thank you, thank you so much for being here and for the work that you do. Jake, thank you for being here and for your testimony. Just so you know, last week?
This week? When did we meet with?
Friday, okay. We met with Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T to have a conversation about the 988 bill and to hear some of their concerns, which echoed some of the things that you represented in your testimony as well. And we're open to working on it and conversations. So, I appreciate you being engaged, and we'll certainly follow up. All right. Councilwoman Nadeau?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much to this panel. It's really exciting, especially to hear from HIPS about all the success that you've had. And of course, we've worked together so closely in Ward 1, so thank you for all that you've done. It seems to me like it's, the consistent outreach in these areas has really contributed to the success of the program. You agree?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, and one of the challenges is like, until you came in, really, the only option we had was to call CRT or call the police. And the issues that we are trying to address in that area just aren't for CRT or the police, right? And so, having the right tool in the right place is really important. What about the hotspot-type targeting, which allows you to focus on a few blocks? Were there a significant repeated activity? Is that a meaningful thing?
Yes, absolutely. That's part of what helps build this trust. I've seen people go from needle exchange to recovery to working with us. And it's all, a lot of it is, we are there, the same people, the same group, and they get to know us. And truly, truly, we are all working in together.
That's great. One of the things you mentioned but didn't linger on was the Safe Passage Program that emerged. And I remember when we all went to Cleveland Elementary together for a very long community meeting about the issues in the area. And having you guys there to talk about the work you were doing was helpful. But I think there was still a lot of skepticism from parents about like, "Okay, how is this really going to help?" But then you got to work and created this partnership with the school. And I remember you saying to me, Johnny, you were just totally floored that a school wanted to partner with you. Why was that?
Traditionally, schools seemed to be kind of the thing that will often impact negatively having a harm reduction organization or anything like that. So, seeing them have, and Dante in specific, having the vision to actually see where we could be useful and how we could actually help reduce any of the problems they have. And we've been very successful at it. It was really meaningful to me. And same with Ms. Amy next door at the daycare, just the vision and the foresight and the idea of sitting down and working together. It's not an experience that I think is common. And I think we've really created something special there that I hope expands throughout other groups and neighborhoods.
Me too. You're right, you're working in Ward 1, but also across the border in Ward 2. And before you created the program for the school and the daycare, we used to get all these concerns from parents. And I can't remember the last time I got a concern from a parent in that area about drug use or sex work or anything that worried them about their children and the space they were in. And I think that's a huge testament to the way that you've done the work and collaborated with folks. Now, the other thing is that early on, we talked about getting you space to do some of the work inside, to bring people inside for food and support and other things, and we kept striking out. And I'm not surprised by that because in the beginning, it was unproven, right? You know, my word wasn't enough for everybody. You know, we had a church that was going to support you, and then that fell through because some of the trustees were like, "This doesn't feel right." And we weren't quite close enough for Howard, and their space was being used for some other stuff. You actually ended up finding the space yourself. How did that come about?
At a community safety meeting, there were some questions, and I spoke on a more, like, a cohesive idea of a plan that included an indoor space. And Don Warner from Key Urban happened to be in the audience and came up to me afterwards, and we got to talking. And thanks to Key Urban and Lincoln and Westmore, we now have an indoor space where folks come in, get a cup of coffee, get a break, counseling, we do testing in it. But it all really sprang from just having the right person in the right meeting at the right time.
What has that space meant for the program?
It's meant a great deal. It has really changed the game from, at one point, we had all of the equipment and stuff spread out. And that was a testimony to how we work with the community as well. Some of our stuff was at Cleveland, some was at the library, some was at Right Proper. But it's allowed us to bring everything under. It's allowed us to do events that we never could have dreamed of doing. Like I said, 200 people and a dozen organizations worked together for Thanksgiving Day. We've done the clothing drives. We did a Juneteenth event. And really, it's meant a lot to people just to have a place that they know they can come, that they are welcome, that they will not be judged, that they can use the bathroom, which has been very important in the work with the local businesses because they face the brunt of the decision rather than say yes or no to the bathroom. And we've been able to do that, have coffee, have water, have snacks. And just, it has meant a lot to people to have a place that they are welcome, not judged, and that they can actually be supported and helped. It's meant a lot even with my relationship with Commander Connor. There are folks on the streets who, only real crime is making people unhappy by being on the streets. We're able to bring them inside, talk to them, and work with them. It's been a true game changer, and I really do hope that will expand into other areas. But it's definitely, I do not have the vocabulary to express how much some of this has meant to me, to the neighborhood, and to individuals, but it's meant a lot.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I just finish up with Johnny? Okay, thank you. So, you don't, do you pay for the space?
No.
And it's not in your budget? If you needed to pay, you wouldn't be able to?
No. Everything about that space was, the space itself was gifted by the combination of Key Urban and Lincoln Westmore. The furniture was all provided by Lighthouse. Pretty much everything there is there because somebody saw that it was needed and gave it to us. We were definitely not operating on a 900 square feet by the Shaw Metro budget.
Yeah. So, if you wanted to replicate that in other service areas, you'd either need more funds or a partner with resources.
Yes.
And then, just to wrap up, because of course, you're at one site in Ward 1, and you're going to, HIPS is going to be partnering with us on the Community Navigator program as a sub-grantee in the new fiscal year, we hope. What does it mean for the organization and for your success to sort of scale out in that way? How do you think about that? Not either of you, or any of you, yeah?
Yeah, for the other program.
Yeah.
Well, I think what's interesting is that collaboration came out of the hotspot program because the two outreach teams were working closely, were like running into each other, getting to know each other, and then providing like complimentary services because they had expertise in, on a certain kind of locations and streets and with different types of use than what our team was working with, and so we were able to complement each other. And, you know, kind of after a couple of meetings, when we realized that there was an opportunity and, you know, we had to, when Brienne approached us about the idea of-
The other Brienne?
Yeah, the other Brienne from District Ridge just approached us about the idea of the collaboration. I wasn't necessar, we weren't necessarily planning on expanding in that way at this time. And, you know, we had quite a few meetings, and she actually told me that, you know, "The fact that you're hesitant about this expansion means that you're really the people who should do it." And so, we sat down and had a community conversation, like, had our organizational conversation about like, "Is this the work that we should be taking on? How does this differ from what we're doing currently?" I'm super excited about it because it is going to be an expansion in certain ways for HIPS, and it's going to be growth, but it's continuing to do what we do best. Meet people on the streets, assess what their challenges are, help connect them to services, help distill why other services or other community programs aren't working, and then do what we need to do. And like, that's been our history, right? That's why we were formed. It's what we do best. And their team has been coming to our all-staff meetings and our all-staff trainings for about the past four months while we were, you know, hopefully waiting for the collaboration to start. And so, I'm really excited, and I think it's a very, very, it's a very good match. They do the same things that Johnny's teams does, just with a different population and with kind of different primary drug of choice.
Great. Thank you so much, and good things to come with the Stabilization Center opening up next year in Columbia Heights and a throne coming to T Street. So, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your indulgence. Thank you. Thank you to this panel of witnesses. If we don't have your testimony, please make sure you provide it for the record.
Thank you.
All right. So, for our next panel, we're going to have to do mixed. So, Dr. Morales Black is here in person. The next person who was planning to be in person is now virtual, so we're going to have to, it'll be hybrid, if that's okay, true hybrid. So, Dr. Morales Black, Daniela Gonzalez Ruiz, Gail Event, Mark Lovoda, Lavanya Dofat Event. I'll stop there. If you're joining us virtually, you need to affirmatively accept our invitation to become a panelist. And there'll be a little box that pops up on your screen, says that you want to be promoted. You have to click that in order to be able to testify. All right. Dr. Black, when you're ready?
Good morning, Chair Henderson, Councilwoman Nadeau, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of the three bills being considered today. The Police-Based Substance Use Disorder Bill, Act Amendment Act of 2025, the Behavioral Health Voucher Transparency Amendment Act of 2025, and the 988 Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Act of 2025. I'm the CEO of NBI Health Services LLC, one of the largest community-based agencies in the district, serving over 15,000 adults and children in behavioral health, adult mental health and substance use, and children mental health, housing services, home health, and physical health, delivering urgent care in Ward 7, and primary care starting in 2026. NBI connects with every human service agency, and we continue to contribute to DC's economy, employing over 1,000 staff, many of whom reside in DC. It is my honor to appear before you to support these three bills. The Behavioral Health Outreach Demonstration Project, which NBI was part of the initial cohorts of folks who support DBH on doing some of that work across the city, has shown evidence that it has reduced the city's non-fatal overdose and increased participation in the Sobering Center across the city, including increase in distribution of Narcan with the goal of enrolling in treatment. DBH has done a good job with implementing those programs, and I totally support the adoption of this act. I would also suggest the expansion of the definition of substance use to include co-occurring disorders, which will then widen that, that can then move upstream to catch those folks with mental health and substance use disorders at the same time. And sometimes, the substance use may not be as visible. Next is the Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Transparency. And Councilwoman, I'm going to skip a lot of what I was suggesting because I saw that the previous folks have already suggested that DBH coordinate with DCHA and possibly to not reinvent the wheel because they already have the café network that landlords and tenants, voucher tenants, can address. And if DHS can partner DBH- And if DHS can partner, DBH can partner with DCHA similar to how DHS has done it. I think there may be an opportunity without labeling the vouchers as mental health and yet being able to access. It's a really nice system and it's easy to use. And I think leveraging that system may be a better way to, to, uh, support that, that, um, initiate, that, that, that amendment. Finally, the 988 Life Support Sustainability Establishment Act of 2025. I was part of the discussion of the roundtable for that. I a hundred percent supports it. I'm running out of time, so I will shorten it to say, I think it's important that not only those four things that was discussed, the three things, which mean they have someone to talk to, somebody to respond to in some place short term. But I would add that, um, adding a warm transfer with follow-up to um, treatment is a nice way to stop recurring crises from occurring and to also track that data set to see how well we're doing as a community. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify, weigh in on behalf of these three bills. And thank you, uh, Councilwoman Nadeau and Chair Henderson for really sponsoring those bill along with all the co-signers.
Thank you.
I think that they will improve the health outcome for the city's residents.
Thank you. Uh, Daniela Gonzalez Ruiz?
Hi, yes, it's Daniela Gonzalez Rios. Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and members of the Committee on Health. Sorry, let me turn on my camera. Uh, my name is Daniela Gonzalez Rios and I'm the Health Justice Coordinator at Advocates for Justice and Education. The Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act would establish a program in DBH to deploy outreach teams into areas in the district to identify individuals with substance use disorders. Currently, there are no overdose prevention or safe consumption services. As other cities are leading this transformational work along with, uh, DC, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, Queen Adesuyi, a co-leader of the DC Crisis Coalition, who brought to my attention the work of On Point New York City, the first organization in the United States to launch two overdose prevention centers in New York City. On Point New York City takes a proactive, community-based approach to reducing overdoses and connecting people with health and social services. Below are some statistics to highlight some of the important, um, impact. 64.5% of participants received harm reduction and health promotion, promotion education. Counseling services nearly tripled from 5.2% to 15%. 99.6% of all overdose interventions did not require any EMS response, resulting in 20 million in savings to taxpayers by responding to overdoses without calling EMS. 50,232 instances of drug use were diverted away from public spaces, so resembling some of the work that HIPS is doing. We recommend that DBH embraces the pioneering work of On Point New York City by partnering with community organizations that have trusting relationships with residents to conduct outreach, ensuring staff are trained in cultural responsiveness and trauma-informed care by collaborating with uh, leading anti-racist and equity-focused researchers that address the systemic drivers of racial and socioeconomic stressors. Prioritizing the hiring of peers, support, and workers with lived experience, developing spaces within their centers that holistically address public health and meeting needs including hygiene stations, art programs, food distribution, peer-led workshops, and communal group areas, as well as expanding civilization centers towards seven and eight and outreach as well over there. Regarding the Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Transparency Amendment Act, a parent ambassador of AJE shared to me that this is a very similar approach to the ERAP program, noting that ERAP initially had a portal, but failed due to the inadequately planning by DHS. Clients' issues were addressed in ways that were inhumane and insufficiently responsive to time-sensitive needs on ongoing crises faced by families, therefore raising concern regarding the oversight for the proposed portal, raising questions on the agency's responsibility for its management and accountability. To strengthen the Behavioral Health Housing Voucher System, the process should be transparent and easy to navigate by supporting real-time guidance. I know I'm running out of time, so I just want to end with, as for the 988 Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment Act, uh, we support the council's effort to develop the fund and mechanisms to support this, specifically as the mental health effects of our qua- mental health affects the quality of our life. It shapes how we feel, the decisions we make, and how we cope with stress. Lower-income families who are already facing many social and economic stressors deserve support to meet their basic needs. We cannot wait for crises to occur. We must intervene proactively, support families with their basic needs. Without timely action, we will see growing number of families struggling with mental health challenges. It is essential, therefore, that we continue investing in the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Thank you for your time and consideration and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Gail? Thought I saw Gail. Gail, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
I'm speaking and trying to get my camera on too.
There you go.
Guys can see me. So, thank, thank you for the opportunity for the roundtable and Councilman Henderson to, to provide testimony this morning. My name is Gail Avent. I'm the, uh, mother, I'm a grandmother and CEO and founder of Total Family Care, Total Family Care Coalition. I'm happy to provide discussion around the Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act of 2025. At TFCC, our mission is to advance community wellness by ensuring access to mental health, substance use recovery, and equitable healthcare for families across the district. My concern is that there is little or no data collection or understanding how many youth and young adults are experiencing substance use disorder or even overdosing on illicit drugs. Uh, youth and young adult aged 18 to 25 are still development, uh, they still developing and nationally, this group had the highest rate of substance use, particularly alcohol, cannabis, cigarettes, vaping, and opioid. According to DC Live Long Dashboard, you wouldn't know it because we don't get to understand or see the information with, with youth and young adults overdose, uh, non-fatal overdose. They only report, report on adults. And kids do grow up. Kids don't stay kids all the time. So we need information for, for the families because we know research say that family that that, uh, work out and get supported heal together. So while I view the proposed legis- legislation, I see a question about how family feel supported when they are supporting their loved ones with substance use disorder and support through recovery. I reflect on a great deal of the, of, of the past that there was great implementation, there was great ideas, but when it comes to the implementation of the blueprint, there, you know, it kind of went off rail and the families didn't get what they supposed to get. So, how do we do better? Because in the last three months, two mom have, have died from overdose, but I'm sure they didn't report it as an overdose. And these parents left five children and then countless grandchildren. So what do we, what do we do? There was a program in the past that had, uh, recovery houses for moms and their children to go into. Now that program is no longer in, in existence. We're not just talking about, you know, I love the idea that there's a substance use outreach amendment, but are we getting the target population that's the future? And the future is the children and the, and the young adults in this city. Are we overlooking them? Because everybody, you know, a lot of these folks who testified already are colleagues of mine. But are we doing the best job we can do? That's my question. So, uh, I have a lot more information that I will submit with my testimony.
Great.
But, uh, thank you for allowing me to come and testify this morning. And I am available to respond to any questions you may have.
Great. Uh, Mr. Lovoda?
Chairperson Henderson and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mark Lovoda. I'm the Executive Director of the District of Columbia Behavioral Health Association and Award II homeowner. The District of Columbia Behavioral Health Association works to advance high-quality whole-person care for district residents with mental illness, substance use disorders, or both, including the 35,000 district residents our 35-member organizations survey annually. The council today reviews three bills designed to enhance the district's behavioral health services and my testimony notes opportunities for improvement for each. The Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act of 2025 makes permanent a pilot program for outreach to individuals facing high-risk related substance use. The pilots demonstrated the value of enhanced outreach for behavioral health conditions. We suggest broadening the scope to address high risk of mental health crisis, amending the criteria for selection of high-need area, and expansion of services to cover both mental illness and substance use issues are pragmatic ways to build on the work pioneered in the substance use-focused pilots. The Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Transparency Amendment Act of 2025 creates a mandated protocol and structure for housing vouchers administered by the Department of Behavioral Health. We're concerned about the mandate that the required portal must be fully integrated into existing case management systems used by the department. A standalone system is likely to be substantially less burdensome without being substantially less effective and might be necessary to ensure effective privacy controls. So we ask for the integration mandate to be removed. We also ask the council to add additional basic information about overall voucher assignment and utilization to the required quarterly report. The 988 Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Act of 2025 creates a new telecommunication fee intended to fill a fund that will support the behavioral health crisis system. We are concerned that revenue from the fund over time will supplant district government local dollar allocations to qualifying expenditures. We also note that the FY26 budget backtracks on behavioral health crisis spending that was in place in FY24 and FY25. We therefore encourage the council to consider adding language to the bill that requires maintenance of effort for qualifying expenditures against a baseline calculated from the district's highest spending for each eligible expenditure type in the current or previous two fiscal years. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mark. Lavonia?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good day, Councilmember Henderson, Councilmembers and Councilstaff. My name is Lavonia Dofat Avent, a licensed clinical social organ deputy director for Adults and Children Clinical Services at Catholic Charities DC. Today, I'm also honored to represent the CHAMP's program. Um, and I appear before you to request that this committee favorably amend B26-0462 to redirect 1 million of the estimated 12.5 million in annual revenue generated by the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline Services to sustain and support the CHAMP's program. In this season of reflection and investment, I come to you with four essential needs for the CHAMP's program, each supported by critical data detailed below. I've already uploaded my testimony. These are, one, the need for guaranteed program continuation. CHAMP's requests, um, the opportunity to continue to, um, its work, its essential work for serving the district's most vulnerable children and families. The need is increasing. Total calls increased just by 4% between October and November of this year alone, um, from 225 to 235, and that's just for October and November. The acuity is high. Uh, calls of self-injurious behavior spiked by 70% and calls for suicidal ideation remains frequent at 74, uh, calls in two months. Yet capacity is limited. Total deployments decreased by 50% uh, from 102 deployments to 51, indicating a failure to meet escalating demands due to staffing shortages which have been caused by funding cuts. Uh, please understand that the shortages are not based on candidates unwillingness to work in the CHAMP's program, but it is public knowledge that CHAMP's existence is under threat. Two, need for professional respect and partnership. CHAMP's is highly respected in the community and as established child experts in crisis response over the past 15 years. The public gutting of the program's funding is more than, of more than 60% has caused not only staff shortages due to cuts, but remaining staff to burn out quickly and have a much higher caseload. This could mean the city loses its, all of its crisis specialists. This dangerously low staffing, uh, level does not allow staff to necessarily, uh, take necessary sick leave, adequate documentation, and conducting essential follow-up calls. Three, need for increased funding to support a primary call, call sources. CHAMP's requires additional funding to continue supporting parents in schools and its most, who are its most significant, uh, referral source. Um, during July and August of this year, 173 calls, um, came in compared to 166 between July and September of 2024. Uh, they also know that if a child is in need of additional services, we can refer them quickly to our other programs with limited disruptions, creating continuity of care. And lastly, the need to remain in business as clinical consultation resources. Uh, CHAMP's provides support to other clinical professionals across the district. The program's role of, as a clinical safety net is evidenced by the 71.8% um, increase in clinical consultations of this year. Um, in additional clin- professional clinicians seek assistance when addressing cases involved involving children who exhibit high-risk behavior, behavioral concerns. This consulting service is vital to the stability of the entire child mental health system. On behalf of Catholic Charities DC and the communities we serve, I respectfully request that you act decisively to reinstate additional funding to the CHAMP's program for the safety, health, and well-being of the children.
Ms. Dofat Avent, um, sorry, you're about a minute over your time. If you want to summarize and, and wrap, thank you.
Yes. So by allocating 1 million, um, from 988 revenue, you will enable us to, uh, maintain three teams and support the well-being, um, of the children who rely on our services. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much to this panel of witnesses, um, for your testimony. Um, I do have one, uh, follow-up question for Mr. Lovoda. Um, you talked about, um, you feel, for the Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Bill, that you felt like a standalone system was better. What would you say about if we were able to figure out a way to integrate this with the existing system that DCHA and DHS already have?
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be like a much more favorable approach to handling this entire issue. I'm not sure that DBH really wants to be in the business of operating housing vouchers anyhow. So if we can establish appropriate eligibility criteria to ensure that people with behavioral health conditions have access to vouchers, even if they don't technically meet the HUD homelessness definitions, but move that all into a system that's fully equipped to handle the kinds of work that need to be done to make sure that people are appropriate, uh, applicants for vouchers and to make sure that they're appropriately matched with property managers, then that's a significantly better system than what we have in place and, and that probably should be the favored approach.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify on that. Um, and I just want to mention, um, for Daniela, so it was, it's been a couple of years now, but, um, I've been out to On Point, my staff has been to New York at On Point, Dr. Bazaron has been out to On Point. Um, so we are very familiar with the services that they provide in, in New York City and, and some other places around the city. And I've said this before and I know people get upset about it, but politically speaking, we are not at a point where we are able to do that in the District of Columbia right now. Um, and, um, but it is something that we think about, um, and especially since, you know, I don't know how many people are paying attention, but SAMSA has really changed their definition of the harm reduction services that they are willing to even allow for federal funding to be spent on. Um, and so that's definitely something that we're gonna have to contend with, with this current presidential administration in terms of how they view harm reduction, um, altogether. Councilmember Nadeau? You have any questions? Okay. Councilwoman Nadeau doesn't have any questions for this panel. Thank you all so much for being here. Um, we're gonna go to our, um, I'm gonna call this the last panel. Um, so let's see how many people are here. Shannon Walsh, um, from Pathways to Housing, the Court Urgent Care Clinic, Mark Robinson at the Family and Medical, um, Counseling Services, uh, Gillian Buford from Harriet's Wildish Gene Dreams, excuse me, uh, Lili Gurkin from Harriet's Wildish Dreams, Mariah Burke Reins from Harriet's Wildish Dreams, Elise Inlick from Harriet's Wildish Dreams, Xavier Smith, and, um, Karen Dafen Graf Reed. I hope I said that correctly. Again, um, you have to affirmatively accept our invitation to become a panelist. Okay, I see Shannon. Shannon, when you're ready.
Uh, good morning, Chair Henderson, Councilmembers and Councilstaff. My name is Shannon Walsh. I'm a Ward Eight resident, a licensed independent clinical social worker and the clinical director of the Court Urgent Care Clinic. The Court Urgent Care Clinic is a partnership between DC Superior Court, the DC Department of Behavioral Health, and Pathways to Housing DC. The Court Urgent Care Clinic provides same-day behavioral health assessments and treatment to our clients in the court system and then link them to the appropriate level. and then link them to the appropriate level of care. Many of our clients come into the office in a mental health crisis. Our goal is to stabilize them in our office and provide the client resources to prevent a crisis from occurring again. This includes meeting with our on staff psychiatrist and connecting clients with long term services. But some of our clients need additional support, particularly during times our office is not open, which is when we encourage them to utilize nine eight eight and the crisis response team. We've heard from clients that utilizing these resources, particularly nine eight eight, has been incredibly helpful in assisting our clients utilize healthy coping skills and identifying their triggers. Many of our clients also utilize nine eight eight not only when they are in crisis, but when they just need someone to talk to. The Court Urgent Care Clinic has also worked closely with the community response team to respond to our clients in the community. Our clients have expressed that being able to talk to clinicians and peers as opposed to law enforcement made them feel safer to express their feelings and ask for the services that they need. We also have had clients call, we've also had clients calls to the community response team to refer to the Metropolitan Police Department due to lack of staff and funding. Our clients who have been met by police when they are in crisis have become upset because they think they're in trouble, and it has at times escalated the situation. Creating a permanent revenue stream through the nine eight eight Life Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment of two thousand and twenty five would ensure that our clients and everyone in the district can receive twenty four seven support by trained professionals as opposed to law enforcement. Nine eight eight and the community response team are vital components of our behavioral health system and allow us to be proactive as opposed to reactive towards individuals in crisis. It would also ensure that those working in these programs are adequately staffed for the need in our community and securely funded. I thank you Chair Henderson for conducting this hearing. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Good morning. Good morning. Greetings Chairperson Henderson and members of the committee. My name is Mark Robinson, and I serve as the Regional Overdose Prevention and Community Engagement Program Manager at Family and Medical Counseling Service Incorporated. FMCS Inc. is one of the district's federally qualified healthcare centers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in strong support of B twenty six dash zero two two six. As an FQHC, we care for thousands of district residents living with substance use disorder, many of whom also face housing insecurities, chronic health conditions, and significant trauma, both diagnosed and undiagnosed. Every day, we see people most at risk of opioid related overdoses who are often the least likely to come into the clinic on their own. Therefore, we must meet them in the community where they are. DBH's FY twenty three Place Based Outreach Pilot showed that this model works. When outreach teams consistently engage neighborhoods, transit areas, areas of concern where opioid overdoses are most prevalent, trust develops quickly. FMCS is currently provides targeted outreach on the Minnesota Avenue corridor, which is Ward Seven, and Maranberry Boulevard, which is Ward Eight. And we have seen firsthand how this approach leads to earlier engagement, same day treatment, connection, and better retention and care with added community conversations. The friends and family members of those with SUD, substance use disorder, get educated and trained as to the particulars of the disease of addiction. Our clinicians then notice a clear difference when individuals arrive already supported by outreach workers and who seem to know their stories and their needs. Making this program permanent will strengthen coordination among DBH, EMS, hospitals, and community partners. It will also support stable staffing, something essential to building long term relationships that help people move toward treatment and recovery. Trust and credibility are major confidence builders in servicing our community members who have been impacted by substance use disorder. From an FQHC standpoint, place based outreach is a critical bridge. It connects people not only to treatment for substance use disorder, including MOUD, but also to primary care, mental health services, and essential social supports. Many of the individuals reached through this model come through the doors because outreach workers, I'm sorry, because someone first met them as a community outreach person. I urge the council to pass B twenty six zero two two six to ensure the program has sustained funding and strong coordination with health centers and community partners. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Gillian?
Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and other members of the Committee on Health. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. My name is Gillian Burford, and I'm the policy organizer at Harriet's Waldest Dreams, a Black-led community defense hub censoring all Black lives at risk of state sanctioned violence in the greater DC area. I'm also a DC native, Ward Eight resident, and MSW student at the Howard University Student, at the Howard University School of Social Work. I am testifying today in support of the nine eight eight Crisis Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty five. We are here today because we know that the current method of crisis response in the district does not work. I believe that community led crisis response is the key to justice and safety in the city. And one major step towards tackling this crisis is through the nine eight eight lifeline. By redirecting mental health crisis calls from nine one one to nine eight eight, we are not only utilizing the city's growing number of qualified mental health professionals, we are also, and most importantly, decriminalizing mental health crises, potentially saving lives. And we have seen time and time again, police presence during mental health crises creates heightened risk far too often. Perhaps January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four would be remembered differently for the family of forty one year old Clifford Brooks, a DC native who was shot and killed by an MPD officer while in transit during a mental health crisis. I read this story after, I read story after story on this tragedy and continued to ask the same questions as his family. Why was DBH not tapped in? I will tell you why, because the current system prioritizes and relies on police as first responders in mental health crisis. Therefore, they felt the crisis response trained officer was enough, but I'm here to remind us that a cop is still a cop at the end of the day, and that precedent will still take over over crisis, as evidenced by Mr. Brooks's absence from his family holiday celebrations this year and the last. Having a mental health crisis is not a crime, so why do we call nine one one to gamble on the help that we may or may not arrive? I'm here today to applaud the council's efforts in building and bolstering a better system through the passage of this legislation, especially through the core tenets of interconnected components. Someone to talk to would provide DC residents with the ability to speak to a mental health professional twenty four seven. Someone to respond would bolster crucial programs like the community response teams and CHAMP's ability to reach most DC residents within their own communities through mobile crisis intervention. Somewhere to go would begin the crucial work to close the significant gaps in the crisis stabilization and acute acute care facilities. Residents across all eight wards deserve to have compassionate, community centered care within their own communities. To make this reality, we must be intentional about the promotion of nine eight eight crisis lifeline. Because of the heightened police and military presence in the district, now is the right time to ensure that we have the alternatives to people calling nine one one to support our loved ones and neighbors in their most vulnerable moments. With federal police more present in our streets during the most precarious of times, we must have alternatives. There are groups that are willing and ready to talk with the council who are about crisis response, what that means, and the wraparound services that can be provided, such as members of the formerly, as the former DC Crisis Response Coalition. However, nine eight eight is only is only a start. Thank you for your time and consideration. I can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lili Gurkin?
Good morning, Committee on Health and Council of the District of Columbia. My name is Lili Gurkin. I am a native Washingtonian, resident of the Palisades, full time caregiver to a special needs child, and grassroots organizer with Harriet's Waldest Dreams with strong belief that community led crisis response is key to safety and justice within our city. As an advocate for humane, trauma informed, mental health crisis response in Washington DC that reduces death, harm, and other tragic outcomes, my hope is that the DC Council prioritizes mental health and safety as public health. Mental health crisis is important to impacted individuals in our community as a whole. It is imperative that DC fully commits to stabilizing and sustaining a dedicated crisis response infrastructure. Behavior health crisis can occur at any time amongst a vulnerable population of residents within DC from youth to senior citizens. Having a dedicated line with experience, empathetic, highly trained, and responsive crisis counselors will prevent criminalization of mental illness, eliminate the misuse of emergency nine one one service line, and strengthen public health and safety. Inappropriate nine one one calls worsen outcomes for individuals experiencing mental health crisis. On September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, a community member in the Palisades was experiencing crisis, and nine one one was dispatched. Instead of crisis response, there was crisis escalation due to lack of appropriate crisis response alternatives resulting in death by local law enforcement, which was witnessed by the victim's family, neighbors, and DPR staff at the Palisades Recreation Center, causing trauma and leading to anger and mistrust of local law enforcement within our community. This crisis, like many others, are complex human issues, not crime first problems. Accountability matters to prevent mental health crisis resulting in death by local law enforcement. Investing in prevention and community mental health resources by publicizing and strengthening the nine eight eight crisis line, expanding crisis response teams and CHAMPs with full funding and rapid response, offering crisis beds and respits all support a safer city. DC must act now, and the DC Council has the power to ensure that mental health crisis is treated as a public health issue, not criminal matters. I'm asking in urgency for you all to fully support the full implementation of the People's Response Act and commit to a community centered approach to crisis response. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mariah?
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Chairperson Christina Henderson and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to testify today. My name is Mariah Burke Rains, and I'm a native Washingtonian, a ten year resident of Ward Five and a supporter of Harriet's Waldest Dreams. I'd like to take this opportunity to advocate for the funding and publicization of the nine eight eight crisis line as well as the implementation and funding of a humane, trauma informed, mental health crisis response system in DC. This hearing comes as we watch our neighbors and loved ones being harassed, brutalized, and killed by law enforcement. As children are being assaulted by the National Guard, families are being torn apart by ICE, community members are being shot by MPD, and MPD is collaborating with federal agencies as they patrol the streets. Law enforcement is not trained in helping people in mental health crisis, and it does not inspire feelings of safety for the majority of people in the city. It inspires fear, and the presence of it too often precipitates state violence and trauma. It's clear now more than ever that Washingtonians deserve to have access to a rapid response system that's guided by trauma informed training and that operates independently of law enforcement. I can't imagine that the families and loved ones of Demetrius Alston, Kevin Booker, and David Warren Childs, three community members who died in MTPD custody and were were killed by MPD last month, would want to risk calling nine one one during a crisis knowing that law enforcement would show up. We're asking that DC and this council act to publicize and fund the nine eight eight crisis line, train nine one one dispatchers and redirect crisis calls to nine eight eight rather than MPD, expand and fully fund crisis response teams and CHAMPs to respond quickly and effectively to crises, and invest in crisis stabilization centers, respite centers, and community based crisis beds to ensure that people have access to care. We know that meeting people's needs and treating people holistically and with dignity leads to more positive outcomes. And there are examples around the country, including Denver, Oakland, and Camden, where we can see clearly that for people in crises, alternatives to policing work. I hope that DC can follow suit here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elise? Elise? Okay, all right. Xavier Smith?
Good morning, Chairperson Henderson and the members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Xavier Smith, and I'm a DMV resident and grassroots organizer who works closely with Black youth and the families affected by behavioral health crisis and the like throughout the city. I'm here to express my support for strengthening the nine eight eight system and related initiatives before you today. Since the launching of this system, the line has ended over thirty thousand plus calls after adding text and text services last year. According to my sources, there have been over two hundred and eighty six chats and three hundred and thirty four texts as of early December, two thousand and twenty four. This indicates clearly that residents are actively using the line and that it meets a genuine need in the community, especially among young people who favor text based support. Across the board nationally, the average in-state answered rate for nine eight eight is about eighty five percent, with average wait times of around twenty one seconds. This demonstrates that the nine eight eight model can provide quick live access to clinicians when properly funded and staffed. But at the same time, too many crises within the DC area are still being handled by armed officers instead of trained behavioral health workers. People with serious mental health illnesses are over ten times as likely to experience a use of force in encounters with police, and nearly two in five people in jails and prisons currently have a history of mental illness. That's the criminalization of disability, not care. Inside DC itself, our own system is in flux. Programs like CHAMP's, our only mobile crisis team for children, have faced and are facing serious budget threats, and the city is currently struggling with its promises of keeping a full time mental health clinician in every school. A nine eight eight line cannot be truly effective if once somebody reaches out, there's no youth team to respond to and no appropriate place for them to go. That is the reason why I feel that the nine eight eight Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment Act is so important. It establishes a crisis services fund, which is financed by a modest telecommunications fee similar to the E nine one one charge, which raises twelve point five million dollars annually across the board. Using those dollars, while those dollars can be used to support the full continuum across the board of the that the People's Response Campaign has seeked to look to fill. Someone to talk to via the nine eight eight and access helplines, someone to respond via CRT and CHAMPs, and somewhere to go via stabilization centers and crisis beds. I'm urging the council to pass this bill with strong equity safeguards, robust public supporting, reporting on wait times, the diversion of nine one one calls to the appropriate personnel, and appropriate handling of racial disparities across the city, and clear limits so that low income residents using prepaid phones are not disproportionately affected by the fee. I thank you for your time and your leadership on this issue, and I'm looking forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. Finally, Karen? Okay, I don't think Karen is with us. All right. Thank you guys so much for all of the public witnesses on this particular panel. Mark Robinson, if you're still on, I wanted to ask a couple of follow up questions.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, okay, so I think Family Medical Counseling Service is one of the grantees that's under the existing pilot for the place based outreach. Is that accurate?
That's correct. Yes, Ward Seven and Ward Eight.
Okay, great. Can you talk to us a little bit about some of the data and the numbers that you're seeing from the work that you all have been able to accomplish under the pilot?
I will have to accumulate, compile the actual numbers since the inception of the program. And if you, if permitted, I can respond back to you before the close of business to give you those exact numbers. I don't want to approximate. But I would say this, that our consistent engagement in those areas as it relates to both servicing people who are in need of substance use disorder care has been consistent. And it's an excellent bridge to helping people transition into a greater continuum of care for those people that normally would not just walk into our facilities to ask for help. The trust, the confidence is key in servicing people that are already have been stigmatized and traumatized for whatever reason in those respective communities. But I will definitely provide you with some some specific data points before the close of business, if that's okay.
Yes, I actually, I have my staff shared with, I guess, a snapshot of a report from two thousand and twenty four. So it would be helpful to get some additional information in terms of the work that you're doing now. Obviously, the areas that you're in is is a little bit different than HIPS. HIPS has been around for a little bit longer, but it Um, H I P S has been around for a little bit longer, but it does seem that um they might have more touch points. And so, of course, we want to think about what are the ways in which we can increase the visibility and the work that you guys are doing? You you, your staff does go out and talk to the businesses and communities um surrounding that area to inform them that you're there.
Yes, they they are, people are aware um that we are in that area, and we've made ourselves visible and accessible to the proprietors and other entities. We, there have been local um uh setups where we've met uh with other community-based organizations in that area um and set up tables to dispense naloxone and provide information to the residents about what we're doing and how they can get additional support. Um, I I, the I, the idea of having a location, though, is is primary in order to educate family members and friends of those who are dealing with substance use disorder. Um, that that is a great um need to have a space where people can come uh on the inside, especially during these times, this time of the the year where it's cold outside and people are a little less um gather less, they're more scattered. Um, and then we're there in the evenings from five until nine in the evenings.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Um, I don't have any further questions for this panel. Councilmember Nadeau, do you have any questions? If she doesn't have any questions for this panel, thank you to our public witnesses. Um, we're going to move on to our government witness, uh, Dr. Barbara Basaron from the Department of Behavioral Health. Um, are you ready? Okay, uh, before you begin, um, I have to swear you all in, so if everybody can raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of law that the testimony you're about to provide to the Council of the District of Columbia in this committee is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yeah, great. All right, Dr. Basaron, please begin.
Good morning, Chair Henderson, Councilmember Nadeau, uh, and council staff. I'm Dr. Barbara J. Basaron, Director of the Department of Behavioral Health of uh at the Department of Behavioral Health. I am here to testify on the bills before the committee that will impact the availability and delivery of behavioral health services to residents. Under the leadership of Mayor Bowser and the guidance of Deputy Mayor Wayne Turnage, DBH supports healthier and stronger communities by working to prevent the onset of mental health and substance use disorders, and by providing a range of community-based treatment services and recovery supports for residents of all ages. DBH also delivers crisis services by phone, in the home, in in the community locations, operates adult and child urgent care clinics, and manages St. Elizabeth's Hospital. I will speak first to Bill twenty six dash zero four six two, the nine eight eight Lifeline Support and Sustainability Establishment Amendment Act of twenty twenty five. In nine eight, the nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Line provides twenty-four hour access to individuals experiencing a mental health or substance use crisis to a trained uh crisis counselor who can address their immediate needs and connect them to ongoing care. A crisis counselor will listen, help solve problems, and refer to ongoing treatment support if needed. Consistent with the national findings, the majority of calls to nine eight eight are resolved on the telephone by crisis counselors who meet the needs of the caller in that moment. And the, if additional support is clinically determined, the crisis counselor will connect the caller to our emergency mobile crisis team or the community response team for an in-person evaluation and support. In addition, nine eight eight crisis counselors also receive certain mental health-related crisis calls to nine one one to ensure a clinical response rather than an automatic law enforcement response. It is important to note that nine eight eight is not just for residents experiencing a crisis. Anyone can call nine eight eight with concerns about a family member or friend and get guidance on how to provide support. In F Y twenty twenty four, DBH received about ten thousand two hundred calls to nine eight eight, a slight increase from nine thousand seven hundred calls in twenty twenty three. Through the nine eight eight Lifeline, in addition to our twenty-four hour access helpline, anyone can call or text to trained crisis counselors anytime for immediate support. Bill two six four six two would impose a monthly te- uh telecommunication fee on landlines, wireless prepaid, and V O I P services with a structure similar to the district's E nine one one fee to support the operation of the nine eight eight Lifeline. DBH supports the intent of the bill as it complements existing funding and helps ensure long-term su- sustainability. At this time, DBH believes the best path forward is to use this legislation to create a special revenue fund that will be used to support the entire operation of nine eight eight, which includes calls, chat, texts, and follow-up outreach. However, the bill should not include fees, and the executive should determine whether it is the right time to pass on fees for our residents during its budget formulation. I will now address Bill twenty six zero zero nine one, the Behavioral Health Housing Voucher Transparency Amendment Act of twenty twenty five. This bill requires the Department of Behavioral Health to, one, develop and maintain an online portal that allows clients, caseworkers, and property managers to track voucher applications. And two, create a standardized checklist outlining required documents, submission deadlines, and responsibilities to simplify the application process. And three, mandates automated reminders for upcoming deadlines and pending tasks. As the committee is aware, stable housing has been proven to support treatment and long-term recovery. The District of Columbia is a national leader in providing supportive housing for people with behavioral health needs to help them live independently and in the community with the right supports. Mayor Bowser included twenty-eight million dollars in our F Y twenty six budget, which supports about eighteen hundred residents, including nearly seven hundred and fifty people with rental vouchers and the remainder living in supported residential facilities that meet their needs. Let me describe the scope of the voucher program and the application process. When DBH exited court oversight in twenty ten, one of the challenges was the inclusion of a question about housing stability in our intake process as a part of our assessment to determine health-related so- and social needs. Unfortunately, this has led to the widespread perception that DBH maintains a waitlist for a rental subsidy. This is not the case. The DBH budget funds about seven hundred and fifty subsidies with about twenty new vouchers available each year due to the ninety-eight percent stability in the rental program. In the past three fiscal years, a total of sixty-one new vouchers were awarded. These vouchers were awarded to priority populations, which include unhoused residents, individuals discharged from St. Elizabeth's Hospital or a nursing home, individuals who moved from supported residence to more independent living, or individuals whose circumstances, such as safety issues, require immediate support. Once these individuals are identified, DBH works with the certified provider to complete the application package, including income documentation. The provider works with the new voucher holder to identify housing. DBH will notify the community provider about any vacancies within the landlords who are already participating in the program. Currently, application documents are collected and managed by DBH staff and distributed by email to partners, to the partners involved. These documents are also filed electronically on a secure server to avoid documentation loss or damage. DBH has a memorandum of agreement with the D C Housing Authority to manage the payment of subsidies. Given the small number of vouchers awarded, DBH will seek uh an estimate of cost to design and implement the new online system envisioned by the bill. Meanwhile, DBH will improve its communication about the limits of its housing voucher program and ensure that community providers emphasize this to consumers enrolled in its program. I will now address Bill twenty six zero two two six, the Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Am- Outreach Amendment of twenty twenty five. This bill establishes a program within DBH for place-based substance use disorder outreach. The bill provides that the outreach program would provide direct support, relationship development, and resource brokering to individuals in need of substance use disorder treatment and behavioral health services in specific areas of high need. DBH conducts public engagement and street outreach to engage residents whose behavior suggests a mental health or substance use disorder through its internal public engagement program and the mobile substance use disorder referral team. In addition, as a part of its comprehensive plan to fight the opioid epidemic, DBH each year awards subgrants to three community-based organizations to conduct engagement and overdose prevention activities. In F Y twenty five, DBH awarded about two point six million dollars uh to this effort. Starting in twenty twenty three with two locations, the council has provided one-time funding for the targeted outreach program that expanded in uh in F Y twenty six to six locations with four designated grantees. Three of these designated grantees also received the subgrants mentioned above. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our outreach grantees for the great work that they have done. This includes H I P S, district bridges, uh, us helping us, and Family Medical. DBH supports the intent of this bill as the targeted outreach program has extended DBH's outreach to other areas and enabled engagement with more residents. The program also has greater flexibility as grantees work during the evenings and weekends. And in one case, a grantee set up an office in the targeted area, which increased visibility and access. In addition, a single point of contact for the targeted area facilitates effective communication and intervention strategies. On the other hand, designated areas by statute or designating areas by statute limits DBH's ability to move resources to address emerging or changing needs as areas of greater greatest need can change. DBH appreciates that the bill gives us the ability to identify targeted areas and select grantees through a competitive process. I note that the program will be subject to the availability of funds. DBH appreciates the opportunity to work with the committee on this bill and and looks forward to our continued work together to help individuals with behavioral health live healthier and longer lives. My team and I are available to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your ongoing support.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to do ten-minute rounds. Um, Councilmember? Great, great. Um, I'm going to start uh with some questions on the Place-Based Substance Use Disorder Outreach Amendment Act. Because I know that is the bill um for which Councilmember Nadeau is also quite interested in and as well. Um, so as you mentioned, Dr. Basaron, um, when we rolled out the pilot, we, the council designated specific areas. Um, and part of that was around our need, desire for this to be implemented quickly um and not to have some long-projected process from the agency side in terms of identifying high-need areas. But as we think about making this permanent, uh, we do think that the flexibility is is needed. Um, and I'm curious, um, you know, from the statute's criteria for a designation as a high-need area, um, do you feel like um that definition works for you all? And then also, um, what do you foresee as the data sources that you all would be using um to make those decisions?
Mm-hmm. Um, yes, I do think that that certainly, there's always room for improvement. But I do think that um we look at issues around uh where overdoses and near fatal overdoses are occurring, uh, where uh we find that people are um loitering or or in the area and and use that to determine where we need to target. We also listen closely and uh to um the feedback that we get from uh residents in the area, from businesspeople, and from others indicating where there may be those high-need spots.
Okay. Um, I know you kind of alluded to this in your testimony, but I just want to kind of make it plain. Um, do you believe that the outcomes and the impact of the pilot thus far uh warrant making this program permanent?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, okay, so we're passing this legislation, but timing, the timing doesn't quite align with everything um in that you all are currently going through the budget formulation process for F Y twenty seven. And this bill probably won't become law if we're adding in the congressional review days, et cetera, until we're well into sort of the budget process. We've been operating this off of one-time funding, but can we hope or expect or keep our fingers crossed that you all are going to try to provide some sustainable funding so we're not relying on one-time dollars?
Uh, well, what I can say is, as you know, we are going through the budget formulation process. Uh, I know you're well aware of some of the budgetary constraints uh that uh we are currently facing, and all of that has to be factored in in terms of how we can best utilize the resources that we have.
Understood, and I'll certainly request with the mayor, I think this is an ongoing issue, right? Yes, we have brought down our fatal overdose numbers, but the numbers that we see from the dashboard, from Fems and otherwise, our non-fatal overdoses are still very high. Um, and the fact that they have not turned fatal has is certainly a testament to the work that we have done around community outreach and providing Narcan to areas and and doing that work. Um, but I still think it is still a problem, especially when I have conversations with Dr. Diaz, right? And he talks about the ever-changing evolution of the drug composition. Uh, while fentanyl has been a very big uh source of a lot of um our overdoses, new things are popping up every day, and obviously, when you mix things together, their their interactions are a little bit different. Let me ask another uh question, just in terms of the oversight of the grantees. So, um, you all have received reports from the targeted outreach grantees. Um, you've shared some of that information with us, and frankly, I would say that um it does provide sort of minimal detail of their activities um and their impact. Do you believe that the reports you're receiving right now provide the level of information necessary to evaluate the effectiveness of a grantees' work?
Uh, I'm going to ask uh Ms. Jones uh to respond to that. Uh, this particular uh grant program really is under uh her area of responsibility, so she can provide more detail.
Okay.
Good morning, uh Chair Henderson and Councilmember Nadeau. Uh, as you mentioned, we get, I am, I actually have broad oversight over this resp- over this area. Uh, Anthony Hall is the Director of Public Engagement, and he is the administrator of this initiative. And he has expressed, and I agree with him, that we need more, uh, we need a a template that provides a little more detail than what we get. Uh, and and we are working with the grantees to make sure we get that. What we do get, which which is valuable, is their touches, the number of engagements, the number of people that are initially linked to services. What we need is a little more detail about what happens next. Do they actually have an appointment? Uh, and we're working, and that's, of course, harder, uh, because you're then following up with people whose who whose name you may or may not know.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, so yes, as far as it is, we think the report has been helpful in being able to assess the effectiveness of the grant, but there is more detail that we're working with them to make sure that all of the grantees capture.
Okay, so have you all identified any discrepancies between what are grantee reports versus um what is observed or verified in the field? Um, and I would say that, right, amongst the grantees, uh, some communities know their people better than others. And others would say, y'all don't have anybody over here, but I'm like, no, 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 we're paying for somebody. Like, we're we're paying for the organization to be there, but they're not visible to the community in that way. And I don't know if that is us needing to change what our expectations are um within the grant process around not just outreach with the potential client, but outreach again with the community, the businesses, the schools, the folks that are kind of in that area to know that you're a resource.
We get the same question uh with our internal outreach team, and so that that is an issue. So what we've done with our internal team is to brand them, request that they wear DBH um merchandise vests, so there are more. request that they wear DBH merchandise vests so they are more visible, but also do the second thing you talked about, and that is the engagement with the ANC's, the community leaders, the civic associations, the businesses, so they know that we're there and can spread the word. But that is an issue. How do we, because people, if they don't see them that day, they think they're not there.
Yeah.
So it is a challenge for our internal team as well as a challenge that we're addressing with the grantees.
Okay, and in terms of that, the rollout, obviously, you know, I want folks to be flexible in terms of when they are present in a particular area. But what's our standard in terms of numbers, days of the week, hours of a day?
It varies. As we mentioned, as Dr. Bazaron mentioned in the testimony, we have one grantee who works in the evenings and the weekends. We have other grantees who have regular sort of business hours. Our own internal team works during the regular hours and on weekends and evenings as needed. So essentially, we require them to have a schedule that fits the area that they're in and the work that they're doing. And that can vary depending on where they are.
Okay. I will just tell you, so a couple of weeks ago, I had a, it was a particular incident where I was leaving a store and a person was walking towards me. They seemed a bit out of it. I had just passed this person. I turn around, the person has collapsed behind me. No one stopped. It's a very busy area. And I'm like, ah, I gotta pick up my kids, but I'm like, ah, here we are. I don't have, the person had something in their hand. So I call 911. As you know, OUC has been going through some things. So I was like, okay, we're going to be very specific. I'm going to give you the location three, four times. I'm also going to give you like the landmarks. So 911, you and me, we're not going to mess this up. You're going to know exactly where we are. But beyond that part, and that was fine, as people walked by, there were comments of, oh, this happens like once a week here. And I feel like for some people, they're getting desensitized to the magnitude of the issue when that is something that is always occurring in particular areas. And this is, this is an area where we're supposed to have a team. And I had to wait for MPD to arrive because there was no one there, which, again, they could have been there before, not there in that particular hour or otherwise. But it does elevate for me that I feel like the community itself is not necessarily feeling the impact of people being around and helping in that regard. And so when we're evaluating the effectiveness, are we talking to communities? Are we talking to ANC's? Hey, is this grantee working? Hey, is this grantee out there? Even some of the organizations that might be in the area. I guess I'm trying to understand, how do we evaluate? Like, are you doing what you say you're going to do beyond just showing me the report every day?
I think both, thank you. I think both things are happening. I think you do have people who are desensitized, but you also have people who are energized. I think as one of the previous witnesses talked about, there are community people who are carrying the locks on as just a matter of course. They carry it. There are community people who are part of our mental health first aid training. So on the one hand, you do see that, but on the other hand, you do see people, a growing awareness of what role each of us can play in addressing people who have behavioral health challenges. So as far as how we look at the grantees, I think that's, we internally work very, attempt to work very closely with all of the ANC's and to get feedback on it. Some we have closer relationship than others. So as far as standardizing, again, as I mentioned, standardizing how we report, that's one of the things that we want to add, is what kind, what are you, who are you meeting with other than the street engagement? Because as you mentioned, wrapping around street engagement is this whole community engagement piece. So that is part of what we're doing to improve our oversight.
Okay.
Right, and I think also, I'd like to say that the, our outreach teams also go to a wide variety of community events and community activities to share information, to take the pulse of the community, to let people know what services are available. And that also happens on just a routine basis. And that's a part of building that community awareness around this particular issue.
Thank you. I'm over my time. Rebecca, can you give Councilmember Nadeau 11 minutes, please? Thank you.
Fancy. Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. Good to see you twice in one week. Thank you for coming to Ward One for the presentation on the Stabilization Center Monday night. We appreciate that. Speaking about the programs in my bill, why do you think these programs have been so successful at addressing issues in areas with longstanding substance use? What makes them different than what we've done before?
I think that, as we heard testimony about this, it's all about relationships. Relationships matter. And as some of the providers indicated, they have built these relationships over long periods of time. So they are known by the community. The community knows that they are there to help them and not hurt them. And I think that that and that consistency over time has made a difference and really contributes to the success.
So, and if I could add?
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything different, other than that we have more resources. This is exactly the approach that DBH has always taken. And that is that we, consistent, dignified, courteous engagement with people who are facing challenges is the way to get them into treatment. And so what's good is that I think there's a growing recognition that this is not an overnight fix, that the goal is not to just move people off the street, but to engage them and build relationships so they go into treatment and they can recover from this illness. So that, I think, just, again, the public awareness of this as a disease is what contributes to a change in how it is that people are approaching this, getting people into care.
How does this program support other DBH programs, including the stabilization centers?
Part of the outreach, of course, is talking about the availability of services. And so if people know what's available to them, and we can then encourage them to move in that direction, that's, that's the point. I think HIPS talked about that a lot. I mean, they've built relationship with people, they've been able to connect them to care. And the goal is, again, to follow up and be consistent and let them know what services are available and then to help them access those services, which is pretty easy, to help them access those services.
And I think, Councilmember, as we talked about during our meeting just yesterday, day before yesterday, I think that having a stabilization center really is a positive feature because then we can take people and they can immediately, 24/7, get the services that they need and get connected to those services immediately.
How do programs like this increase our substance use disorder outreach capacity and reduce call volume for CHAMPs and CRT and other emergency response programs?
One way is to have people there in the location. I mean, HIPS' location on T Street or in that area has helped increase access and visibility. However, to be clear, the CRT does respond if there is a need for onsite evaluation and treatment. So it continues to support, CRT supports the outreach that's taking place and brings the clinical skills there when needed.
And I'd like to emphasize that we have a continuum of crisis services. And so none of these services are stand alone. So we know that outreach services there are also connected to our Community Response Team services, which are also, by the way, connected to the training we're doing with MPD around crisis intervention services that are connected to our 988 and our Access Helpline, and particularly the text and chat feature for our young people. And so we have to really think about this as a system as opposed to a one-off.
We've talked a lot today about the community engagement piece and how that's made some of these programs even more successful. That type of engagement's not explicitly outlined in the legislation as a requirement of the program. Is that something we should add, or should that remain up to the grantee?
I think that we should work with the committee about some language. That's implicit in that is that it should be happening, but if it, it would be helpful to spell it out, or we can make sure it's spelled out in the scope of work of the agreement with the grantee. I will say that this, that we have seen an increase in the number of people, we're encouraged by the increase in the number of people who are receiving substance use disorder services. Last year, we saw a 13% increase. And we also saw an increase in expenditures of twice that. But it is, it is an area where Dr. Bazaron has focused attention, and that is to try to get back to where we were pre-pandemic and also to grow the number of people who are getting served.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You don't need any. Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilmember Nadeau, for joining us. Okay. I want to stick on this bill briefly to ask about the coordination with the place-based outreach with other DBH programs that already exist to make sure that there's not an over-duplication of efforts. But when you all onboard your grantees, I'm going to say onboard, are you also connecting them with the K Street Stabilization Center so they know that that is an option of referral?
As Dr. Bazaron mentioned, the three grantees that we now have are three grantees who we've worked with for years. The three grantees, three of the four grantees have had grants through our opioid work for the last five years. So the advantage of working with them is they do know our system very well. They do have contacts and relationships. And I mentioned Anthony Hall for a reason. He's the person that's in charge of our internal outreach, outreach team, as well as our mobile van, which does outreach. So he is best able to coordinate both internal and external.
Okay.
And I also want to mention this last thing. We've had the approach of targeting support, as you've mentioned, hotspots, particularly around the opioid outreach. We at one time had like 30 areas that we had identified as hotspots. These areas that we are now focusing on in your legislation, frankly, you know, overlaps. Most of them already were areas that we considered hotspots or areas to focus attention. So I said to Councilmember Nadeau, what it has done is added resources to what we already were doing. And so naturally, that allows us to reach more people.
Okay. I mean, I'm glad that you brand your folks. I've yet to see a sort of DBH outreach worker who sort of works in this particular area. Now, that's not to say that they don't exist, but I do see our grantees more often. Now, that could be in, in some cases, there's overlap. In some cases, they're in different areas of the city. And in some cases, we just need to put some additional eyes and attention, like I said earlier, right, around like the Starburst at Benning and H Street, which has been an ongoing challenge and issue that, that's important. Now, I think the thing with this is, though, in terms of outreach, and one of the witnesses talked about this earlier, right, the ability to be consistent in an area. So someone who may not be prepared on that first interaction, but on the sixth interaction, they're like, okay, you keep coming back. Okay, now I'm going to talk to you. Okay, now I'm going to do the X, Y, or Z. In terms of the DBH outreach folks, are they consistently in one particular area, or are they sort of more roving?
Let me be, I should, maybe, let me be clear. We have a small internal team of four people.
Four, okay.
And, and they do, though, have regular targeted areas, often identified in consultation with council members. So there are, for instance, we have a regular schedule at Eastern Market. We have, so we have, so we do, they do have a regular schedule. We have a regular schedule for the mobile van. Minnesota Avenue is always on the list, right, and on the rotation. So, yes, they do have a regular schedule, and then they also respond, you know, to new needs. But it is a small team, that's why I was, made a point emphasizing that the advantage of this program is that it just brought more resources to the table.
Okay. Are there any gaps that still exist in transportation or warm handoff capacity?
If I'm answering your, if I, let me try to answer your question this way. It is, as I mentioned, easy to access services. So our team can connect them through the 24-hour Access Helpline. The team can take them to the stabilization center or to our emergency psychiatric center if needed. So, so no, I mean, I think that's something that's part of the protocol, that you should, as much as possible, connect, do the kind of warm off, handoff and the connection.
Okay.
And I'd also like to mention that we also have the MyRides program. So if somebody needs transport, not just to that first visit, but to other visits to get the care they need, they can get that and access that free of charge.
Okay. So we still have the, excuse me, Drug-Free Zone work that is happening in terms of MPD. And are you all still? Now, I know I get the communication every time they establish a new zone. I want to confirm that you all are still receiving the communication every time they establish a new zone.
Yes, we do. But again, the community doesn't believe we do because if they don't see us, they don't think we're there. But we do, and we try to work, we try to, the resources in those areas when we get those designations.
Okay. I guess I've been trying to understand, and this is maybe less a question for you guys and more a question for MPD, is who's on that email list to get that alert, right? So I know council members receive it, I know the agencies receive it, but are, how is the community or those who might be grantees in those targeted outreach areas alerted that, hey, there's going to be some additional activity in this way?
I know we are, but I don't know specifically what the mailing list looks like.
Okay.
So that may be something that we can get for you.
Okay, and I think we could also follow up with MPD as well on that front. All right, is there anything we haven't asked you on this particular bill that you want to make sure you say for the record? Okay, great. All right, so let's go to the Housing Voucher Transparency Amendment Act. Okay, so I guess, let's start with, do y'all want to be in the business of doing housing vouchers? Do you all want to be in the business of doing housing vouchers?
I can tell you how we started in the voucher business, as I said in my testimony. And that was during Dixon. That was one of the Dixon requirements.
Right, the court decree.
That is why we got in it. So is that a part of our, what our core functions are? No, I think it is not. It could be served elsewhere.
Okay, okay. Because I think that is a, I think that is an overall question, even as we're talking about and the public witnesses talked about today, right? So I've got DCHA and DHS who've reworked their application. They've streamlined their application. I'm like, well, wait, DBH is over here by themselves. And maybe on our part, right, I, maybe I don't need you to do a new portal. Maybe that is not the direction that we need to move here, but rather, how do we get this integrated with the system that already exists? And also initiate a path of consolidation altogether.
As you saw from the data over the past few years, I mean, we only really had about 20 vouchers a year. And really, that's really just step down people from St. Elizabeth, looking at unhoused people, stepping down people from nursing homes.
Yep.
And stepping down people from CRFs to a lower level of more appropriate care and housing. And so, you know, there really are few vouchers that we have available on an annual basis.
Okay.
And Dr. Bazaron, if I may, also, besides the capacity issue which you just mentioned, it's important to remember that the total size of and scope of our voucher program is quite limited. We have about 720 slots available compared to DHS having 8,100 and DCHA having about 17,000. So people tend to conflate all three programs, thinking the capacity's about the same, when it's really not. So we have limited capacity in a smaller program, and we're really focused on certain high-priority populations that no one else, if we don't, would serve.
But certainly, Madam Chair, this is something that we can work with the committee on in terms of moving forward.
Let's do that. I remember in the previous director of DHS, we did a similar conversation because there were lots of quote-unquote "special population" vouchers that existed. So Veteran Affairs had some vouchers, LGBTQ Affairs had some vouchers. Yeah, everybody, it was just harder to sort of maintain who had what. And I think it was more confusing for some residents in terms of what the full amount of opportunities were. But I think also for some very enterprising residents, they, those who knew, knew.
Knew.
And everybody else was just sort of on a waitlist endlessly on some of these things. So now, Dr. Moise, you talked about- So now, Dr. Ruiz, you talked about the sort of small number that you guys have per year. How many applications do you guys get per year?
I'll answer that question. We need to address, need to give you a little better definition of how, how our process works before I talk about the number of applications, because we don't formally have an application process.
Okay. This is.
Like, you submit an application. We have limited capacity, so you go on a waiting list. Like, as Dr. Bazaron says, that is not our model, and that's not what we do. So our internal, given the limited capacity and the smaller number of vouchers that we have, our clinical staff, our outreach staff, our administrative staff, our people, case managers that interface with hospitals, acute care hospitals, as well as St. Elizabeth's, identify, and it's often very critical. Some of these people are very, very sick, have no place else to go. And if we don't work with them to get them into some sort of housing, their health overall is going to be compromised, as well as their mental health. So, so what, we, we get this information from all our stakeholders, both internal and external. And we try, based on our capacity, to give priority to those folks first. And then the way that works is we then, our internal administrative staff work with a CA, I'm sorry, CSA, or the caseworker, or the hospital, you know, the parties involved, to make sure, let's see, that we have the information we need in terms of defining the needs of that person in terms of housing, their income eligibility and so forth. And then we usher and hold their hand and manage them through the process of making sure they're eligible, considering what their options are, helping them to identify an apartment, and then, you know, closing the deal. So it's not an application process. It's really identifying people.
Identifying the person in play.
And I would just like to say that, you know, we cannot, St. Elizabeth's Hospital can't discharge people to the street. We cannot do that. And so these few vouchers are used to make sure that those individuals can go into a housing arrangement.
Yeah, but there's no, I would, there's nothing to say that DHS, knowing that, hey, of the vouchers that you have, 20 of those are set aside for St. Elizabeth's step downs. I feel like there's a way for us to work this out.
Sure.
Okay.
So we can, we can work together with the committee in terms of really thinking through the process.
Okay.
Chair Henderson, not to avoid your question, so I wanted to answer, give you that preamble. But in terms of how many people we enroll each year approximately in the voucher program, our voucher program, it's 20, 22. And over the last three fiscal years through 25, it was 61 total. So that's how many new people came into the program.
So how many staff does DBH have that's dedicated to working on this?
Like I said, it's a, it's a team approach, but the folks exclusively, exclusively and dedicated to this process is two staff and a manager.
Two staff and a manager. Okay. Because if we're going to do a consolidation, I want to make sure that somebody doesn't lose their job in the process. Or that they find a new home at a new agency. I don't know. But let's talk offline and sort of work, let's see if we could find a better process there. Because now, as I'm looking, some of the questions that we would have for you aren't really relevant if we're talking about, maybe this isn't the right place. But also, if DHS and DCHA can absorb the responsibilities of these vouchers, that could help in some ways.
One other thing I'd add, I agree with what Dr. Bazaron said and what you just said, but we could do a better job, maybe with all three agencies working together to talk about capacity so that when people have a need that we identify, that don't fall in one of those five or six primary critical priority categories, we know what is available elsewhere within the system, within the district, to at least point them in the right direction and support their efforts to get into those programs.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move to the third bill. Now, Dr. Bazaron, I know you're walking a fine line here. Your testimony basically says, like, create the fund, and then don't put any money in it.
It says what?
You basically said, yes, we want you to create the fund. We think this is important. And also, don't put any money in it yet. Okay.
That's exactly right.
I just want to make sure that I heard that correctly.
Absolutely.
Now, like I said, you know, I had a conversation with some of the telecommunications companies on Friday. They talk about price sensitivity, et cetera. I did also sort of mention, and I don't know if it's just sort of a millennial thing or whatnot, once you go to paperless, I can't tell you the last time that I opened up my cell phone bill to actually look to see what I am being charged. Auto pay is a thing, but also, I know I'm being charged fees. And I did, after the meeting, go in, log into AT&amp;T and look and say like, oh, okay, so there's some state stuff, there's a federal fee, and then there's a 911 fee, et cetera. And I know that the Bowser administration is, is, is not, is not opposed to a 911 fee, considering last budget, they tried to increase it by a lot when it came to hotels. So we all acknowledge that we have infrastructure needs for both 911 and 988, and then we don't want to actually do the thing to help support the thing.
Well, as I said in my testimony, I do think that that is a decision for the executive.
Okay. All right. So then, let me ask.
And so, you know, during budget formulation, that is a discussion that I'm sure could be held.
You know what's really going to be funny with this? Is if this happens at the same, something happened very similar with the deputy mayor for Public Safety and Justice. I make a suggestion. She tells me, oh, my God, it can't possibly happen. And then three weeks later, the mayor rolls out the exact same thing that I suggested the weeks prior. Not to say that's what you're going to do, but we could take a bet to see if we don't move forward of whether or not the mayor's budget for FY '27 is going to include a 988 fee herself. All right. So let's just talk about some of the things in terms of the staffing and infrastructure needs for 988, just sort of in general. So what's the current staffing model for 988? And are we meeting national best practice?
Currently, and, and I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Janet Burhoe, who's responsible for this area. But currently in 988, there are 12 full-time equivalence staff. And then they work with access helpline, where there are 26 additional FTEs. And the access helpline staff are cross-trained to provide that support.
How many are, how many staff are on any shift, any given shift? Because I'm, obviously, you don't have 38 people on at the same time.
That's correct, that we usually have two to three staff in three shifts around the 24-hour period. All of access helpline is trained to answer 988 calls. But the staff that Dr. Bazaron was referencing are staff that are funded by federal dollars, specifically for the purpose of answering 988 calls.
Oh, right, the 12. The 12, okay. How, well, obviously, our call volume looks a little bit different than other jurisdictions, but the two to three staff per shift, has that been enough to meet the volume such that someone isn't having to wait an exorbitant amount of time when they call?
At this time, it seems to meet the calls that are coming in and the capacity needs.
Okay. And do you guys have a process for them to sort of escalate if that changes? So I imagine that there are certain times of year, knowing what we know about behavioral health and suicide prevention and otherwise, right? Certain times of year are harder for individuals than others. And do you all have the nimbleness to adjust your staffing based on, hey, we think that more might be needed on this particular week?
I would say largely yes, and that's the reason that we have the entire access helpline staff trained to be able to answer 988 calls. That, again, they get priority routed in the call, in, in the background, right? They get priority routed to those staff that are dedicated to 988. But if we can't get to that call fast enough, or we've got overflow calls coming in, all of access helpline is trained to take those calls.
I see.
So that we're able to, to meet those needs. But we also do then take data and information, right, on that monthly basis to see kind of where the ebbs and flows are throughout the year, so that if we did need to make those kind of capacity adjustments, we would know when and where we would need to make those.
Okay. So the FCC and federal law prohibit 988 fees from being used for nine, for non-988 purposes? What internal controls do you all implement to ensure that the funds are only being used for eligible costs?
Part of that was the restructuring that we've done to really ensure for this current fiscal year, from October 1st moving forward, that we can very clearly in our data see which calls are 988 specific and who's answering them.
Okay. I imagine federal government has some audit requirements?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
And so the part of that reconfiguration was in response to that federal feedback about how calls were being routed and how they were being answered and received. And so DBH did make those adjustments for this current fiscal year to come into alignment with what was expected.
Okay. Are there any current outstanding technological upgrades that are needed for our system? So software, interoperability tools, telephone systems, et cetera?
Yes, specifically around both software enhancements and interoperability.
Okay. But though, would these system upgrades be eligible under the 988 fund?
They can be.
They can be. Okay, great. All right. You know, like I said at the beginning, one of the things that we're trying to think about, and I think we're being forced to think about, especially given the year that we've had, is what if the feds decide, eh, eh, 988, okay, whatever. We know that it's still useful. We know that people are still using it. So what's our local response? And as I told either Jake here or the, the telecommunication companies, et cetera, it's not our intention for the, the funding that is received from this fee or this fund to 100% cover the full amount of what it costs to do 988 or even 911, right? The 911 fee doesn't cover 100% of the cost of running 911, but it provides a baseline of support such that if something happens and changes on the federal side, we're not starting from zero and having to grow, but we're starting from here. And we're like, okay, we got to augment just a little bit to get us to the next point. So that's really what we're trying to get to, if that makes any sense. That was sort of there. Now, we, in the legislation, propose that funding that goes into the 988 fund can be used across the crisis response continuum, including the call center, but also mobile crisis teams, stabilization centers, and outreach and others. We've received some written pushback on that and a desire to see that the 988 funds only be spent on either staffing or critical infrastructure needs. What are your all's thoughts on that?
My thought is I appreciate the flexibility that was provided so that we can really support the needs of the community effectively and provide the best response system.
Okay. How does language access work for 988 within the current system?
Well, within the current system, they would have, they do still use the language access line for people that might be calling where English isn't a first language, and they need the language that they use.
Okay.
To integrate into that call.
All right. Just a question, and I should know this, but the 988 team and the access helpline team, where do they sit?
They're at 64 New York Avenue.
Okay, so they're at 64 New York. Okay. So are there any opportunities for them to, I don't know, coordinate or work in partnership with the OUC team?
We do have some co-located staff at OUC. It's just the significant, kind of the, the body of the staff for access helpline and 988 is at 64.
Okay. How often do callers get transferred between 911 and 988 now? I'm not entirely sure if that's the full protocol, but I'm curious.
Well, in FY '25, there, there's quite a range, right? Of the 911 diverted calls that come into access helpline.
Yep.
Anywhere from a low of 37 calls a month to a high of about 98 calls a month.
31?
37.
37 to 98. Calls per month. And how often do you all have conversations with the team over at OUC and 911 to like make sure that we're working out any kinks in the process?
Well, as I'm sure you're probably aware, that there've been some leadership changes, particularly in my role. So that's one of the things that we're doing to really reinstate those real relationships.
Okay.
In fact, I've got a meeting this week with, with OUC onsite to really sit and look at, again, workflow and criteria and really reinstate and that relationship and begin those conversations again.
And in addition, I meet monthly with the director so that we can really have ongoing communication and make those changes that are required to improve service delivery.
Okay. Let me ask my staff. Hold on one second. Okay. I think we're good for today. Obviously, we'll follow up on all three, but in particular, let's work something out on the housing piece because it actually would be very nice if we could figure this out before budget for the housing one, so that it's just sort of moved, and we don't have to worry about it. But this does conclude today's hearings. I want to thank the witnesses today, the public witnesses who testified, as well as Dr. Bazaron and your team, for discussion. So the record will remain open until 5:00 PM on, well, okay, we're not going to do. Hold on. I'm looking at the calendar, because they said the record's going to stay open until Christmas Eve. But we're just going to keep it real. We're not reading it. Y'all aren't sending it. So we're going to keep the record open until December 24th. Sorry, December 29th. That is the following Monday, Monday, December 29th, for the public to submit any testimony. You can submit written statements via the Council's Hearing Management System site, dccouncil.gov/hearings. The committee will hold its next public hearing tomorrow, December 11th. At 9:30, we are discussing Bill 26-463, the Judith Human Memorial Workers with Disabilities Act of 2025, and Bill 26-356, the Prenatal and Postpartum Remote Patient Monitoring Clarification Amendment Act of 2025. All right. There being no further business before the committee right now. The time is 12:09, and this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.